Good evening. Welcome to the Northampton City Council Meeting of November 7, 2013. I'm City Council President Bill Dwight and I'm presiding. We start each meeting with an opportunity for the public to speak. And here are the rules of engagement. You're allowed three minutes. There's a little timer that will make you freak out as the seconds count down. You're invited to wrap up within a sentence as the time expires. We aren't going to shut you off spot on at 3:00 if you're finishing your thought. But if your thought rambles on to two or three more pages, we'll ask you to stop. That's the royal "we." I will ask you to stop as the presiding officer. The other rules are that the council is not allowed to engage with the public. We've listened. This is the opportunity for the public to speak to the council and the council has to shut up. And trust me, it's for the best ultimately. But those are the rules. So if you do ask a question, it will remain unanswered, not out of respect, out of an absence of respect, but conforming to the rules of decorum. So all that said, we have five people signed up. And the fact that you haven't signed up doesn't exclude you from speaking if you're so moved afterwards and we'll give you an opportunity for that. First up is Marissa Hebbel.
Hi there. I thought I had five minutes, so I'm going to make this quick. I'm Marissa Hebbel. I'm the coordinator of the Northampton Convention Coalition. I'm a Northampton resident. I'm a parent of two teenagers. I'm here to make comments about the marijuana-as-medicine ordinance in front of you. This ordinance reduces some of the measures as put forth by the Massachusetts State Department of Public Health. It reduces some of the measures that limit access to kids and some of the measures that make it so that the community sends a message that marijuana and kids don't mix. And I'm here tonight to urge you not to pass an ordinance that reduces any of the measures put forth by MassDPH. MassDPH went through a thorough and lengthy process to develop these regulations. Reducing these regulations through the planning board is kind of like getting a prescription from your physician, running it by your banker, and having your banker recommend reducing the recommendations put forth by your physician. Your physician has a body of knowledge and information that your banker does not have. It was mentioned during Monday night's ordinance committee meeting that there is no data to show that a lack of buffer zones around pharmacies increases youth use of pharmaceuticals. And I hear that point. Except marijuana dispensaries and pharmacies are not the same thing. I know that you have been told the contrary many times, but they are not the same thing. Marijuana dispensaries are unique to anything that we've seen in this community and they should be treated differently. The fact that this ordinance leads with wording that states that dispensary is allowed in any facility where a pharmacy is allowed is utterly misleading. So we've got a Venn diagram in front of us. You've got two circles that overlap in the center. One circle is dispensaries, one circle is pharmacies. Where they overlap is where they're similar because there are similarities. Someone goes to a physician, gets a recommendation, goes to a location, purchases that recommendation. But there are many, many ways that pharmacies and dispensaries are different. Imagine for a moment that a pharmacy is attempting, a new pharmacy is attempting to open up in Northampton. A pharmacy that is going to sell one medication. A cash-only pharmacy that is going to sell one medication. A medication that is not FDA-approved, that is going to be dispensed by someone who is not a licensed pharmacist. A medication that is mood-altering, that has addictive properties, and whose potency has increased dramatically in the last 20 years. A medication that is the second most commonly-used substance amongst Northampton youth. I would hope that we would implement unique restrictions and regulations for a pharmacy like that because that is unique to anything that this community has ever seen. In addition, a dispensary is not the same thing as a needle exchange. They both provide very important services, but they are not the same. They should be treated differently. We can still be on the forefront of progressive health in this community and implement marijuana as medicine with all of the regulations as put forth by MassDPH. In California in 2010, the legislature passed Assembly Bill 2650, which added a 600-foot buffer zone between dispensaries and schools. This is a state that has had marijuana as medicine for a long time and has been able to learn lots of lessons from their communities. Berkeley, California, has a 1,000-foot buffer zone from schools. San Francisco has a buffer zone of 1,000 feet from schools, regulation centers, or other buildings at House Youth Services. If anything, we should be learning from these states. My final thought. I understand you've all taken time to consider this issue and that makes a lot of sense. 130 communities across the Commonwealth have issued moratoriums to give themselves time to think about this. It's important that we make a good decision as opposed to a quick decision. Northampton youth deserve a good decision. A resolution would be great, but legislation is the most effective and important way to affect the health of a community. So on that, I urge you not to pass an ordinance that reduces the restrictions as put out by MassDPH, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Arnon Verid, please.
Hi. I'm Arnon. I'm the co-founder of New England Treatment Access and I live in Swanscott up in the North Shore. And we're going to be applying for an RMD application. I just want to make a few quick points. So first of all, 81 percent of people in Northampton voted for medical marijuana. And that's before they actually knew about some of the security measures. So physically in the store, in order to get in, you actually need two IDs. The ID that you have like a driver's license, but you need a special state ID just to enter the place where you can actually get the medicine. You can't enter unless you are a patient, a caregiver, or you're in a unique situation. For example, you can't push your own wheelchair. So it's not like anybody else can actually come in. Of course, there's going to be physical security, like a security guard, security door cameras, and there's going to be a statewide tracking system that will make sure that you can't go to one store with your prescription or recommendation, then go to another one. And then to add to security, there's a special state felony that was created for this. If somebody actually diverts a medical marijuana to somebody else, it's a minimum of five years in prison. Compare that to what happens if you actually caught with some marijuana today. It's a misdemeanor or a civil offense at the max. Those are the real security measures. When it comes to buffer zones, I just want to reiterate what happened in some of the other committees that were in this room. Several people have mentioned it's not really hard to walk a few hundred feet. That's not really the issue. The way, the place that all these buffer zones came is old federal directives. They became a lot less important. This is why so many cities are removing or really diminishing those buffer zones, which was the call memo that came from the US AG's office a couple of months ago. And what it said very clearly, it was very simple, is that if they were going to have good regulation at the state level and dispensaries are going to follow it, the feds are going to have hands-off regardless of the size of the operation. California is not in a good example of a place that has good regulation from a state perspective. It's probably that and Montana. Some of the, there was, it's completely dissimilar to Massachusetts. When it comes to things that are in the state regulation, like daycare and where children congregate, putting that to the map, we've certainly seen it here and in the other location, which is in Brooklyn, you start putting that to the map and you start running out of real estate very quickly, probably putting those circles on the map. And a few people, again, in this room, the committees talk about daycares, about how they're really not concerned that four years are going to escape daycare, go through all the security, go inside a dispensary and begin consuming medical marijuana. When it comes to this specific resolution, we actually asked you that you accept it. Some people actually thought about removing even the 200 feet because of some of these arguments. We actually urge you to keep the 200-feet buffer zone because what it says to the state, and there's a legal issue here, that we have looked at the buffer zone, this is the buffer zone that we chose for this community. So I urge you to actually keep the 200 feet. Other than that, if we are able to vote for it twice today, so it's over for all the applicants who can actually apply with certainty, that'll be great. 10 seconds to go.
Thank you. Thank you. Ed Etheridge, please.
Edward Etheridge, 64 Gothic Street. I actually support what Arnon just said. The planning board put in a 200-foot buffer. The city council thought that with all of the security measures, ordinance committee, with all the security measures, no buffer was particularly necessary because it's not the buffer that does any protection for these particular centers. They're limited in advertising and everything else. But doing land use regulation and other sort of regulatory matters, I would just say that having the 200 buffer is an easier thing to deal with than having no buffer because then you have a specific regulation that's cited. Someone who's looking, the idea of regulation, whether it's for zoning or anything else, is before you do anything, you look at the regulation to see what's permitted so that you comply with it. And if there's a question after the fact, that's okay. But if there's a question before the fact, that's problematic. So I support what Arnon said. As he said, 82 percent of the people in Northampton voted for this. The security is good. But in terms of the regulatory enforcement issues, we would prefer to see the 200-foot buffer that the planning board recommended rather than not having a buffer, which is what the ordinance committee recommended. Either is acceptable, but that is just what we would prefer to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Geronimo, please.
Hi. I'm Lori Geronimo and I'm the COO of Hampshire Health. Now, last November, as you know, the voters of Massachusetts said it's time to provide patients who suffer from chronic and debilitating illnesses safe access to marijuana for medical purposes. Our mission is to implement the will of the voters in the most responsible and professional way possible. Our nonprofit organization, Hampshire Health, seeks to create a safe and secure environment where severely ill patients can access educational resources and the highest quality of organic medical marijuana available. Our board, our diverse board of directors, consists of local residents who have a vested interest in strengthening the network of quality palliative care services in Northampton, whose children attend school in Northampton, and are experienced local stakeholders who want this newly legislated medical industry to be implemented well with community input, with your community input. Hampshire Health has applied solely for an RMD license in Hampshire County and is committed to locating in Northampton at 118 Conne Street, a building formerly occupied by the Pioneer Valley Family Medicine. It's an ideal location since it was previously the home of a very busy medical practice. Hampshire Health was created solely to provide medical marijuana to qualified patients and we plan to do it in a professional, secure, dignified, responsible way. Our building location reflects our sensitivity to traffic mitigation and parking concerns of the municipality as well as focus on patient accessibility. Hampshire Health has chosen a strategic partnership with the same highly-qualified experts who built the most professional and secure medical marijuana facility on the East Coast, the Thomas C. Slater Compassion Center in Providence, Rhode Island. We extend to you an open invitation to visit the Slater Center anytime to show you why this facility has become so highly praised by Rhode Island patients, health officials, and local community leaders. With the team from the Thomas C. Slater Compassion Center, Hampshire Health will bring that same level of experience, knowledge, and professionalism to our community. Unlike many of the dispensaries in western United States, the Slater Center's team has experienced operating a medical marijuana facility in New England under strict stringent regulations similar to the regulations enacted in Massachusetts. Working collaboratively with the Department of Public Health, lawmakers, and law enforcement officials, Hampshire Health will ensure the highest level of security and safety. Through the combined experience of our organizations, we also understand the need to provide a location that is accessible to patients from various types of transportation. Running a tight ship, not cutting any corners, and providing the highest quality services, we take our responsibilities very seriously. All medicine that will be provided at our facility will be thoroughly lab-tested. Our facility's security will be second to none and our commitment to being a responsible and contributing member of the local community is paramount. By creating jobs, providing safe access to medical marijuana for registered patients, and partnering with the local community, we are confident that Hampshire Health will be an asset to this city of Northampton. Northampton patients and residents deserve the best and our team's track record proves that we can provide that. Hampshire Health also, we want to congratulate the City Council of Northampton for its leadership in drafting zoning regulations and paving the way for a retail marijuana dispensary to locate here in Northampton. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Lori. Ray Jackson, please.
Hi. My name is Ray Jackson. I live at 23 Bottoms Road and I'm here on the private way issue. We've lived there for like 25, 30 years now in our property of Butts Bottoms Road. As long as we've lived there, the city has always plowed and maintained this road. This dirt road, not a driveway as the BPW claims, dates back in the '30s by the name of Walter Bottom. And as of 1957, when Mr. Leonard Day purchased the property from Ernest A. Demon, it was always plowed and maintained up until this year. So far, so far, well over 56 years, this road was taken care of by the city. Back in 1984, there were some issues raised about the right of way of use of the road and the DPW took steps back to back off, but they continued plowing. The issue of private ways sparked on the Cape was spread across the state because those communities and neighbors turned on each other with envy. This is not just a driveway. We have multiple dwellings here. Bottom Road is a dirt road and over the years, it has stayed a dirt road. Just as the dirt roads in the meadows, the city owns and maintains these dirt roads. And the reason for that is there's an airport there, they have access to the river for emergency rescue in the summer. As a taxpayer, we have those same services, but if the roads are washed out and we get snowed in, we have no access to emergency service. So as in a butter-to-bottoms road, we're asking that the city consider our petition request to help Bottoms Road become a public way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all we have signed up. Is there anyone else who'd wish to speak? Going once, going twice? Thank you very much for your time there. I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor Cymon?
Present.
Counselor Boye?
Here.
Counselor Freeman Daniels?
No.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes, here.
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 Thank you, Mary. We had a 7:05 public hearing scheduled for Sandry Realty Incorporated doing business as Sunoco at 776 North King Street in Northampton. It's the application for a license amendment for storage fuel. And I'm calling that hearing to order. Are there any proponents here, please? Are you a proponent? Is the applicant here? Come on up. You're the proponent. I'm sorry. Yeah, we, it's fancy language for...
Too many of these, sorry.
Okay, that's all right. Could you tell me your name, please?
My name is Sharon Abbott. I work for the Sandry Companies out of Greenfield, Mass. We own the Sunoco Station, 776 North King Street. And we're proposing to reduce, we currently have 30,000 gallons of flammable storage underground at the gas station now. And we're proposing to reduce the flammable storage down to 21,000 gallons and add 9,000 gallons of diesel fuel. Our industry as a whole is starting to see an increase in people buying passenger cars and light-duty truck vehicles for diesel. So the need is there at the gas station level. So that's what we're looking to do. And in order to do that, we need to amend our license as it currently stands.
Any questions of the applicant? Counselor Tacey?
You're going to reduce it by 10,000 gallons?
Well, we're going to reduce our current storage of flammables. We have three 8,000-gallon tanks.
Yep.
So we're going to reduce that down to 21,000 gallons. We're changing the tanks out. That's why we're doing it, we're taking the opportunity, if we can, to do it at this time. So we're going to change the tanks out. Right now, we have three 8,000-gallon underground storage tanks that all hold gasoline. So that's 24,000 gallons. We want to put in two 15,000-gallon tanks. One is going to hold just gasoline. The other will be what they call a split compartment tank. Part of that will be another blend of gasoline at 6,000 gallons. And then we would have 9,000 gallons of diesel fuel in that tank. So that's what we'd like to do.
Thank you. Counselor LaBarge?
Thank you. Are you seeing an increase on the diesel?
Well, other people are in the industry. We don't, we don't offer diesel at too many of our gas stations in this area. And the ones we are, we are seeing more vehicles and more people asking, you know, why aren't you offering diesel? And the industry as a whole is seeing an increase in passenger car diesel requests. So that's what we thought. We'd take this opportunity while we're upgrading the station.
Are there different storage criteria depending on the fuel? Does diesel have a higher or lower threshold of safety measures or are they comparable?
It is, compared to the gasoline, which is more flammable than the diesel fuel, which is a combustible. Underground, there's not a lot of difference. Above ground, you have to do different measures, but underground, it's pretty much the same technology for the tanks, yes.
And is that going to require you to change any other of your facilities once...
I'm sorry?
Was that going to require you to change any other facilities that you're going to have on the property besides just the tank replacement?
No, just the tanks and the piping. And we're going to put new dispensers in, which will offer the diesel as well as gasoline at the dispensers.
Counselor Tacey?
I'd always wondered why you hadn't provided diesel fuel at that station right off the highway.
Well, that's what we're, that's what we're going forward in the future, trying, any of our interstate locations, we would like to be able to offer diesel. We're not trying to attract the big tractor-trailers. We're not big enough for that in the yard, basically for the passenger cars traveling through.
Neither is the Pride Station on the corner and it's quite a debacle there sometimes, yeah, for traffic. It's in the wrong spot, so I thought maybe that might relieve some of that congestion also.
It might.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Are there any opponents or anyone speaking to the other aspect of this hearing? I'll accept a motion to close the hearing.
So, second.
All those in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Discussion on the application? Counselor Tacey?
I think it's a great idea. Anything that would relieve a little bit of that pressure at the Pride Station on the corner of King Street and Damon Road would be welcome.
Counselor Murphy?
I would move to grant the permit as requested.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on approving the application and the permit, an authorized permit? And we can do this voice vote or is this roll call? Roll call, please.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Cymon?
Yes.
Counselor Boye?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Schwartz?
Yes.
Counselor Tacey? Yes.
Thank you. Permit's granted. Thank you. We also now take this time, this is also a scheduled hearing for the tax classification for FY 2014. Is, there's Joan. Thank you for coming, Joan. Joan is the assessor and here to present and for a recommendation for the tax classification. What's that?
The floor is yours. Okay. So I'm passing out this sheet because I think it's very interesting that the Department of Revenue has this sheet set up in Gateway and it's telling how much money we can raise each year. So when you look at the middle of the sheet where it says 2014 levy limit, so we start with $43,768.074 in the middle of the page about...
2.
48.
43. No, 43.
Is it my eyes, or...
That's the FY 2013.
Are you looking at A? Item E and A.
A or 2E?
Number 2 in the 14 levy limit.
Calculate the FY 14 levy.
Okay. So that's what we start with. And then they add the new growth, which is $1,094,202. Actually, that's the two and a half. Then the new growth, which we're very fortunate to get almost $50 million in new value for new construction for the city, which allowed us $716,719 for new growth. And the override is $2,500,000. And I just wanted to show that that was 78 cents on the tax rate. So then they give us the new total. And below, we start with that. And then we have to add the debt exclusions for the different JFK, the high school, the fire station. And the police had a $700 amount there to be raised. And so that was 22 cents. I just thought you would be interested in this. We do have a levy ceiling, which you can see in F. It's 80 million. But we're way under, so we don't need to worry about that. But some communities have hit their levy ceiling and in that case, they can't even use their new growth. So it's sort of a sad situation. So we're here tonight to talk about the tax rate for FY 14. The tax rate will be $15.40, an increase of $1.14 for $1,000. Susan and I have been working to try to get everything put together so we can get a tax rate set hopefully this month. You can vote to increase the tax to the commercial taxpayers and decrease the residential tax pay rate. Usually, communities do not follow this procedure if they have a 20% base for commercial. That's really very low. We can shift 13% from the residential to the commercial side. We have to stop and think. For the commercial people, we've already added the CPA, which they pay with no exemption. We've added the bid in a lot of cases if they're in that area. Plus, they will be receiving the stormwater charges that will be coming up to their commercial tax bill as it is. Also, I'm kind of concerned about the TIFs that we've passed for some commercials because a higher tax rate would just wipe the TIF out. For every dollar we take off the residential rate, it adds four to the commercial rate because our percentage is 20% we have for commercial of our total value and 80% are the residential people pay. I was hoping that we were going to gain some more in commercial this year and see that go up maybe to 24. But because we had 22 new houses and they're kind of expensive houses come on the books, we had that for new growth also. So it pushed the residential percentage up too. But we have many, well, not many, but we have quite a few commercials that are partially finished that we'll pick up next year as being finished and that will give us the additional new growth there. Communities that did pass this increase for their community right away, and in most cases it was where they had a lot of old mills and a power plant and they wanted them to pay more than their share. Now, many of the communities are trying to switch it back slowly. It's very difficult to do. Our values for the commercial are already high. They will not hold with a higher tax rate. I'm concerned about that. I would urge you to stay with a factor of one for all properties. And I talked about the new growth, $50 million. That was really great. And the new homes were basically up on Village Hill. And also, this is another thing that you can do to the tax rate. You can allow 20% of the average assessed value of a home, which is around $300,000. So for every home... So for every home that has, that you domicile in, it's a little catchy, you have to be sure they're living in the home to give this exemption, you take value off their tax bill. But then in return, you have to increase the tax rate to make up for what you've given to the lower... The lower-priced houses still get the higher tax rate, but they'll benefit more from subtracting the 20%. So the lower-valued homes would benefit, but at the expense of the higher-valued homes. And one thing that really bothers me about this exemption is that we have a lot of low-income available in Northampton, and that would push their tax rate up substantially, especially something like Meadowbrook. So that's one thing, one other thing you can do with the tax rate. And the third thing is the state sends us a list of small businesses with less than 10 employees. For instance, the list has about 276 businesses listed, and you can vote a 10% reduction to that business on this list. But the tax rate for remaining commercial industrials would, the remaining, this is, would have to make up that difference, the people that aren't on this list. For instance, if the business is a strip mall, for instance, or even like Thorns, all those businesses would need to qualify for this exemption. If one doesn't, then nobody gets the exemption. And the benefit of the exemption would go to the person owning the property. And I'm not sure that they would give a refund check to all their small businesses. There's only several communities that use this, but it is available. In the end, there's really no free lunch. If you favor one class of property, you burden another class. The best thing is to encourage business to come into Northampton. That will help the homeowner in a different way. Also, you have to remember that businesses don't have children that go to school, and our new economic development person is working hard to lure more businesses into Northampton.
Thank you, Joan. Questions, please. Counsel Tacey?
The police station, the point, the 22 cents, that was $717,000?
Yes, that we raised this year.
$717,000 for the levy.
Yep. All of our, like the high school, the JFK, fire station, they came to $1,004,146.08. Those are our debt exclusions that are eventually going to get paid off, and I think a couple of them are close to that. They're added together, submitted on a sheet to the Department of Revenue, and the police station is in that amount.
Is the police station in the 1.414?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Adams?
So if I'm reading page six correctly, under the residential exemption example, a person who owns a home valued at $200,000 would see a tax break of $564,052.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be subsidized by those with more expensive homes.
Right.
Now, if I'm also reading it correctly, going down the list, we could see how the various values would lead to various tax breaks and then eventually increases once you start getting to the more expensive values, home values. So am I reading it right that if you owned a home valued at $450,000, you would still be getting a $7.98 tax?
Right. I'm not sure, this is an estimate of how it would come out, because we have to find out how many of these houses and condos people domicile in. I mean, probably most of the 101s people own, but there are a few that would be rented. But the condos, I really feel that many of those are rented, which we wouldn't allow an exemption, so we'd really have to look into that situation.
Well, so before you would see an increase, you would have to own a home worth a half million dollars before you'd see an increase?
Well, I think really it would start earlier if, I was just trying to...
I'm not really, really need exacts.
Okay.
My point is much more general than that. I'm not, that's not...
Oh, okay.
What I mean is if somewhere in the vicinity of owning a half-million-dollar home, that's where you begin to subsidize those who have a home value, more inexpensive home value, this may be something we should consider. Because then we'd essentially be subsidizing, I mean theoretically, those who have a home worth a half-million dollars or more can probably afford a $98.48 tax increase. If you own a home worth $700,000, that's a $540.48 tax increase over the course of a year, and that's not a substantial amount throughout, divided up over four quarters. However, if you own a home of $200,000 and your tax break is $564.52, that may make a difference. That may be helpful. So I think that this is something that the Massachusetts General Laws allows for. It's clearly based on the social justice concept, and I think this is something we should consider. And also, we can have a factor of one and this exemption, so I think this is something we should consider.
Counsel LaBarge was next, then Counsel Murphy, then Counsel Spector, Counsel Freeman Daniels.
So Counsel LaBarge.
Thank you. So Joan, if we did not do this factor one and decided to go the other way, what and why, which I'm hearing from you of stressing doing the factor one, why and what is the problem of having commercial come in, of breaking that tax break?
I think if you give the homes a tax break at the expense of the commercial property, I don't think our values will hold. Our values are high for the commercial property. And in the formula, the tax rate is taken into consideration, so I really don't think our values would hold. Our values are high, you know? We have $25 a square foot, $30 a square foot on Main Street. You know, if you go down to Hoy Oak, Springfield, Chicopee, you don't see anything like that value. It's because of who we are. We're kind of the envy of everybody.
Because I know, I hear every year that it's not a good way to go. And you also stated last year that because of the economy and going through the recession, to not look at it. So would this also be a reason of why of not looking going to commercial?
Right. Our stores are doing well, but not as well because of the economy and the situation.
Last year, you also talked about how many building permits versus what are we doing now with building permits? So do you know, can you give me a comparison?
Well, we were able to pick up $50 million, and this is through building permits and new construction was pretty amazing during this time. But we have a lot of building permits that amount to a lot more money than we've had in the past few years.
Counsel Murphy?
To, I just want to address both of those questions as well. The commercial properties are valued based on the income they generate. Taxes is a fixed expense that reduces their income. So if you take an income property that's valued at $1 million and you jack its tax rate by $9.80 a thousand, you reduce the income it generates and therefore reduce its value. And it continues to do that. So when you increase their expenses, their value goes down, their tax yield goes down. And that's why a lot of communities that do this eventually figure it out and go, you know, we're bleeding the goose here, because the values keep going down as the expenses of taxes go up. So in the first year or two, it's YPIO, but after about 10 years, the values of those buildings sit, settle down and your yield goes away, which is one of the reasons we tend not to do that here. The other problem, you know, if you talk about commercial social justice, is that somebody that owns a $5 million building on Main Street has a triple-net lease and they're passing those taxes on to their tenants. So the guy selling posters and jelly beans is paying the tax, not the person that owns the building, because the taxes follow through the lease to the tenant. So you end up decreasing the value of the building and its tax yield to the city and put the burden of that not on the building owner, but on the tenant. So that's one of the reasons we don't do that. And then the, unfortunately, the residential exemption has a real nasty social justice implication, because on the surface, it looks great, oh, I own a $200,000 house, so somebody with a $700,000 house will be picking up the taxes that I don't pay. But every rental house in the city will also pick that up. So I own a $250,000 house that I live in, I get a tax break. My neighbor rents a $250,000 house, that owner doesn't get a tax break because they don't live in it, so their rent gets jacked to cover the tax increase. So on the surface, it's very tantalizing, but when you figure every rental property in the residential class is not going to get the exemption, and all those tenants are going to get jacked rents to cover those new taxes. So, I mean, how is it social justice that somebody that owns a $250,000 house gets a break, but somebody that rents one right next door doesn't? In fact, they pick up the break that their neighbor got. I mean, many of these exemptions, all of them were not written for Northampton. They were written for Boston, they were written for resort places like Cape Cod. They weren't writ, they were not written for the city of Northampton, so they don't really fit here. And if you try and jam them in, there's an unintended consequence that, you know, you can split your tax rate if you have a new plan, because it isn't going anywhere and it can't escape. So heavy industry, big infrastructure, things can't leave. But the small businesses, if you split your tax rate and you're giving a, you know, a $2 break to a residential person and a 13, you know, a 13% increase to the other side at almost 10 bucks, because you're spreading a break to seven, almost 80% of your tax base over about 20% of your tax base. So a little break to 80% of the people is a major increase to the other 20. And the fact that it then decreases their values when you do that, so the yield keeps going down year after year until you really lose any advantage you had in the beginning. And it's very hard to get out of, because once you give people a tax break, it's much easier to give one than take it away. And if you give 80% of the people a tax break and then decide it's the economically wrong thing to do, it's really hard to take it away.
Counsel Spector, and then Counsel Freeman Daniels.
Thank you. Counsel Murphy explained, I had the question of what do we mean that the values, the commercial values would not hold, and you explained what that meant, so I appreciate that. Yeah, although on the surface, I agree, something to look at in terms of the $200,000 versus the $700,000 home, the problem is, in a ward like mine, I know a lot of people struggle in that they're kind of property-rich but income-poor. They've lived here for a long time, and the value of their home has gone up, they're on a fixed income. And so they may own a home, especially in a ward like mine where the values have skyrocketed, and they're staying there, but they're really struggling to pay those taxes, they're living on social security and small retirement. So they're not all, it may be true for people moving in and having the funds to pay for a home now at $700,000, but a lot of these people would never have been able to afford to move into the neighborhood now. They just happen to have been here for a long, long time, and this is their nest egg, and this would really hurt them. So I think it gets very complex. And I think we'd have to do a lot more work at seeing, you know, kind of what really would the numbers be on this? How many people would it affect that I'm talking about in some wards? Maybe there are certain wards where it applies and it doesn't apply in others, but I know the values in Ward Two have really gone up so high that it would squeeze a lot of people there, so.
Counsel Freeman Daniels, and Counsel Carney.
I support the factor of one, and I just want to call the council's attention to the fact that the residential exemption example given on page six is the maximum. So a smaller one could be effectuated with some helpful benefits that does not create a major burden on renters or the higher-valued properties. Thank you.
Counsel Carney, then Counsel Adams.
Okay. I also support the factor of one, and was concerned when I looked at the consequences for renters in terms of the shift, primarily because it's clear that that burden would be shifted to renters. So many folks, for example, and there's a large number of condo units in Ford Run or his River Run, and a number of places where that are, you know, certainly less than 250, worth less than $250,000, but they're not owned or occupied and they are rented. I think probably half of those at River Run. And so I'd be, and those are typically low-income people. So I would be concerned about a shifting of that burden, especially since it was not a, I mean, it could be a significant shift in a burden to a renter for, you know, a $500 a year break on a $200,000 home. And that would set up, you know, that strange irony between one condo owner living right next door to another renter with a significant increase in cost, or difference in cost. It wouldn't have to be that, as Counsel Freeman Daniels said, it could be a lesser amount if we didn't do the maximum. But I'm just concerned about the implications of that for renters and would be really, want to be very careful with that.
Counsel Adams, and then Counsel Tacey?
What mechanism would you have in place to police whether or not they were owners or renters?
I think we'd probably have to hire somebody to check every project out, you know, like go to River Run and find out how many people, how many rentals there are there.
More than cumbersome.
It would be. We'd need some help, yep.
You would absolutely need additional staff.
Basically, this was, like David said, it was passed for the Cape communities, because that's why you see that domicile clause in there. They wanted to give it to the summer people that had the expensive colleges. This is why this...
And this discussion is not something new. This is, we have this every year, every single year, and it's always the same. And I thought maybe you had that wrote down, because you said that last year.
Circumstances have changed. I think I've said this for the last...
A lot longer than I have.
Yeah, so my two cents worth is I'm going to support the factor of one with no residential exemption.
Counsel Adams, please.
The reason why I think it's worth a discussion at minimum is because, well, Counsel Murphy brings up the point, and the issue is, it's homeowner affordability, particularly those with low-value homeowner, lower-value homes on the spectrum versus commercial and rental affordability. So, but I think, as Counsel Spector said, it might be worth really looking at what that means if we take a look at what the numbers are exactly and what that burden would be for some people. And as Counsel Freeman Daniels pointed out, this, the example is with 20%, but we can give from, you know, anywhere 20 or below. So I think it's a worthwhile consideration. And again, we can also have a factor of one and this. So we talk about affordability, and we shouldn't ignore the fact that we have this mechanism, which actually could relieve the tax burden of some people in our city, some of those people who are struggling. So I think it's worthy of further conversation. Thank you.
Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, Joan mentioned this is really for the Cape. And where you see it work, there is a town like Chatham. You know, Chatham has a real range of property. I mean, you've got multimillion-dollar beachfront properties owned by out-of-town people as vacation homes. And then you've got the regular population of policemen, firefighters, teachers, restaurant workers, the year-round residents that live in the town. It works really well where there's that major shift between property values from luxury vacation homes and the homes of the typical person. While we have, you know, $700,000 homes, we don't have $7 million homes. And that's really what they wrote it for, was to take advantage of those very, very expensive vacation homes and give a break to basically the year-round population who keeps the town running so that the vacation people can come and afford it. In fact, there, they pay personal property tax on the vacation people and everything, and their house too, because it's not their principal residence. So they really get zinged down there. But, you know, I agree with the philosophy. If you've got a $10 million beach house, you probably can afford the taxes on that. They also don't quite have the rental impact. I mean, I think almost half our residents live in rental housing in the city, I think. And half of them do, so that is where it really creates a problem for me, because you shift it over onto those landlords that pass it on. I mean, we're already passing on over a dollar per thousand increase in the base tax, we're going to pass on a stormwater fee, and then if we do a residential shift like this and add more, it's going to really impact those rents. And, I mean, that, I think of the rental housing population as much more vulnerable. You know, if you own a home, you're doing better than most of the tenants are in the city you're in. You know, you're going in, you've got a fixed expense for your housing. So that's really what concerns me, is the impact on the people who live in rental housing of a dollar a thousand plus a stormwater fee. What's that do to their rent? And then we do a shift on them too. That only makes it harder and harder to control rents. And I feel bad for people in rental housing if we do this to them.
Joan, I have a question. Every time we set the tax rate, it essentially, the tax rate is essentially the apportioned amount so that everyone pays that proportion that contributes to the revenues. And always when we set the tax rate, there, because there's a center point, right, there are some people actually, in some cases, depending on how their neighborhood's valued, may pay less than they paid in previous years. Is that, is that true? true?
Right.
And then there will be other people who, in neighborhoods that have experienced more growth, more development, or more value on their property, they will actually realize an increase in their taxes. But, and it, and there is a tipping point, not dissimilar to the way you've laid this out, even with the 20% mitigation. There's still, there will still be people, if I understand this correctly, who will get a tax bill that may be lower than it was in previous years.
That's right.
And the struggle, of course, is always to try and explain why that is.
It all depends upon the sales in your neighborhood and value.
Right.
It seems like some communities are seeing their values fall, but because Northampton is what it is, they aren't falling here. For instance, in Hoyoke and Springfield, they're at their levy limit. So, even if they get new growth, if they get five new houses, they can't even use it. And because their values are falling, that means their two and a half is falling, and they can't even use that. So, it's a real problem.
Counselor Freeman Daniels is next, then Counselor Tacey, Counselor LeBarge, Counselor Murphy.
I, I don't, I think we're pretty much off the residential exemption, but I do want to point out that earlier in the year, the council passed a zoning package that significantly loosened the restrictions on new construction and also using lots and existing structures for additional units. And we did, the council did that in UR B and C. I think it's, it was past time to bring it to URA as well. And that's a, this is a way in which it was touted, and it is the case, that property owners with larger parcels or with larger homes would be able to create more units either inside the home or on a separate, or subdivide their parcel or something like that. And with that, they would, they may be able to stay in their home, albeit a smaller one. But I don't think it's out of bounds for the council to consider that people with lower-valued homes may not be able to do that. They might live in a ranch of 1,200 square feet that just cannot be divided. And so, again, the residential exemption may be seen as an appropriate counterpoint to the zoning package that the council put forward, put through. And I hope the future council will put through for URA and other areas of the city in the future.
Counselor Tacey, then Counselor LeBarge, and then Counselor Murphy.
I'd love to save the $343 on my house. I mean, because mine went up $389. So, I'm still going to pay 40 bucks more, even if I got 20% off. But I see--
Well, when you get to be 70, maybe you can come in and have an exemption.
I already think that could. Anyway, I think, I think we beat, if we're going to do that, I think it would probably be in our best interest to try and start to figure that out long before we come here on the night that passes.
I think there should be hearings on something like that.
This is a hearing. Just not to put too fine a point on it, but it is. Counselor LeBarge.
Right, that's right. So, Joan, I live on Florence Road, but across the street are homes that are worth a million, a million and a half.
And West Hampton Road?
Florence Road.
Okay.
Directly across the street, you have some beautiful homes. But on Florence Road, like I just heard Counselor Tacey say, and also Counselor O'Neal, Daniel's, smaller homes that are probably worth about $197,000, $200,000, whatever. So, why would they be paying the same as this house that's worth a million and a million and a half?
Well, the house that you're speaking of isn't like any other house in Northampton. It's absolutely fabulous. But we, we will, we, it won't, there hasn't been a sale there, but we do have a high value because of the magnificent house.
I'm talking about houses.
Well, there's not--
It's not just one. There's like--
Well, they're valued according, according to the sales in that neighborhood.
Yep.
And they're valued according to the square feet. The computer picks out the house that is most similar to the house that they're val, that's valuing, according to the square feet, the grade, the condition. Everything's taken into consideration. And each, each year it changes because of the sales. So, it's, we have a lot of sales. Every sale went to the state, and we had to do a sales ratio study to show that we were still coming in within 5% of 100%.
I've lost track. Counselor Murphy, you are next.
No, I mean, if the council would like, in the next year, for the Finance Committee, you know, because we don't ever talk about this except for when we're in this hearing, and then it goes away. I'm really confident that if we laid out the impact on everybody in the city for a residential exemption, you would find that it hurt more people than it helped. But we certainly can do the math for that in the, before this comes around again in a year, so that we can have a, you know, look at the spreadsheet and say, oh, you're right, you know, between, you know, what it does in, to the more expensive homes, what it does to the tenants, it really doesn't work for us. I think the most telling thing is that of 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts, 12 of them do this. And I bet every one of those has Atlantic Ocean frontage to it.
Or Berkshire.
Or, maybe, maybe they're in the Berkshires, maybe they're like Stockbridge or something.
And the residential people living there, they're not happy with all those people.
And it's got a high portion of expensive vacation homes.
So, they decided to give them the business.
Yeah. So, they've got, they've got a way to, you've got to get away, a way to get away with it that doesn't hurt the residents of the community. And I would feel really bad, you know, if you're a resident of the community in rental housing, you shouldn't get hurt by us giving somebody a break that's a resident of the community in a house that they own, you know, at all.
Well, I worry about a lot of the low-income housing, Meadowbrook, Hamden Gardens.
Because they're in the residential class, so it shifts to them.
Are they going to raise the rent if we raise the taxes? And when, you know, when you've got 11 or 12 million on something, it's really going to raise them.
Yeah. But I mean, if you want to ask the Finance Committee in the new term to do the math on this, so that we're comfortable the next time it comes around that it really, you know, it really doesn't work for the majority of the citizens, we can certainly do that if you want us to. So, it's not a last-minute thing.
Counselor Freeman Daniels and Counselor LeBarge.
I was going to move to close the hearing.
Oh. Counselor LeBarge.
I yield.
Question, Counselor?
I would highly suggest if we could do that, I think that's a good direction, Counselor.
Yeah, I know, that's, that's next. And it's, we're not going to close the hearing until the public gets a chance to know the opponent, okay? And I just, and I only want to add to this, I would actually agree to that charge of the Finance Committee, because I think this is salient points, and this is informed every debate that we've had in many of the past elections, including the most recent, and that there is the pressing concern that everyone recognizes and acknowledges. And anything that we can do that can successfully mitigate, I think, is inappropriate, is appropriate to research and then possibly even vote on. Now, we've reached the point in our hearing where the public, if the public has any questions or wants to step up and speak to this, you're invited to do so. Suzanne.
Even though I do this every, my name is Suzanne Beck. I live at, I'm here representing the Greater Northampton Chamber of Commerce, and I live on Park Hill Road. And even though I do this every year, it certainly can't be overstated how important it is that you all support the factor of one policy. It's not, and it is the consistency, kind of, as there, even as the council turns over its members, you've declared a very strong policy preference for factor of one. And of course, that gets factored in to any investment decision that is made in the city. And it also sends a message that you recognize that that policy not only supports the business community's vitality, but that is a shared benefit with the residents of Northampton and other communities. So, just an interesting note, a couple of weeks ago, Terry Masterson, who's a member of our Economic Development Committee, kind of ran through the list of development projects in the city of Northampton right now, and it totaled $81 million. It's probably unlikely that we've seen that kind of commercial development in one snapshot in quite a lot, you know, quite a long time. And we know, it's Village Hill, it's King Street, it's the reuse of the Clark School property, that's all contributing. But the thing to keep in mind, in terms of your decision about the factor of one, is that it, you know, this is the foundation policy that kind of balances the regulatory and the market forces that are also contributing to what a property is worth and whether an investment is feasible. So, it is probably the most critical, from a commercial business development point of view, it is probably the most critical decision you'll make all year. And it's, I just, you know, I need to say that every year, that it's, that, you know, we applaud that consistency, and we certainly agree with the policy. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would wish to speak at this time? Your Honor?
I just wanted to go on record on behalf of my administration that I am a, we support the factor of one, continuing the factor of one, echoing what Suzanne said. Clearly, we're experiencing a significant uptick in economic development in the city. And in some of the discussions we've had with businesses, you know, they're looking at different cities, different tax rates, and clearly, the factor of one is one thing that we can point to in terms of being advantageous to locating here. And I also want to emphasize that the issue of when you go that other way, how difficult it is. And we can look around to many of our neighbors in the valley who have gone away from the factor of one and are now in a position, including some who have reached their levy limit. And so, any new growth that happens in their community will not, you know, be added to their tax base. And it's very difficult, as the assessor said, to go back. In terms of the residential exemption, echo what Counselor Murphy said, and there's also several communities you can find online that have done very exhaustive studies of this. Sudbury has a 72-page report. They commissioned a study and went through it. And they, going into it, they thought there were social justice implications, thinking this will benefit elders in the community. At the end of the report, they find that that's actually not the case. And so, many communities look at it. So, I do, I do think it's important for us to look at it, because it is, I think, deceptive, the way it's presented, in the way it's sort of presented in the legislation, the regulation. But in terms of the actual impact, I think we'd find that it would have a negative impact in Northampton. So, I support just a straight factor of one. And then the only other thing, as Susan Wright has pointed out to me, is that if you were to do something like this, we'd need a lot of lead time in terms of setting the tax rate. And so, I'm thankful that you're not going to make this change tonight, and that you will take some time leading up to this hearing in the future, if you do decide to move in that direction. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in, from the public, with a wish to speak on this?
I'll accept a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Okay, Counselor Murphy.
I would move that we adopt a factor of one for fiscal year 2014.
Second.
Or 15. It's 15.
Have to come out of finance?
I'm sorry?
Doesn't have to come out of finance?
14.
The recommendation for--
Yeah, I think so.
14.
Yeah. That has to come out of finance.
Mr. President.
The order's in finance, so that's a good, so we can't vote it out of, it's not, we can vote--
Vote to recommend to the full council, right?
Yeah.
When we get to finance.
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor Freeman Daniels, for that. Okay. So, what else you need to, is there any other packet of paper?
All right. Now, it's the point that, well, we have communications from the mayor. Any communications from the mayor? Okay. This is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narcoitz and City Council President William H. Dwight. This is a resolution. Whereas in November 2012, the voters of Massachusetts approved a statewide ballot measure eliminating criminal and civil penalties for the use of marijuana by qualifying patients who have been diagnosed with a debilitating medical condition. And whereas the voters of Northampton overwhelmingly supported the legislation of medical marijuana by a margin of 81%, and whereas five applicants have been qualified under the Massachusetts Department of Health regulations to apply for a registered marijuana dispensary license as part of its competitive final phase-two application process, and whereas several applicants have expressed an interest in opening a medical marijuana dispensary in the city of Northampton that have met with city officials and community stakeholders to discuss their plans, and whereas the city of Northampton has an established history and network of quality palliative care services, and is an appropriate location for Hampshire County Medical Marijuana Dispensary, and whereas the siting of a medical marijuana facility in the city of Northampton will provide economic development benefits through temporary construction jobs, permanent facility jobs, and the generation of new local revenue through property taxes or payments in lieu of taxes, and whereas the Northampton City Council, with input and recommendations from the Planning Board and the Board of Health, has implemented a responsible zoning regulations to ensure that any proposed medical marijuana facilities meet reasonable site plan criteria for issues like parking, traffic, hours of operation, lighting, security, and neighborhood character, and whereas the Massachusetts Department of Public Health's final phase-two application for a registered marijuana dispensary license seeks a demonstration of support or non-opposition furnished by the local municipality. And so, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council support the award of a license by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health for a Hampshire County Medical Marijuana Dispensary to be located in the city of Northampton, subject to its local health, public, public safety, and zoning regulations.
Move table.
A motion to table cannot be debated. Is there a second?
Second. Can I clarify?
Please.
Table till later in the meeting?
Till the regulations are passed?
That's my suggestion.
If they pass.
So, the motion is to table. There is no debate.
It's not a debate. It's a point of clarification. Could you expand on that, the reason? Just explain it to me, that's all.
It just, it says it.
It refers, this resolution actually refers to rules we haven't approved yet, I believe, this is Counselor Freeman Daniels.
Okay.
Am I right?
Coming up this evening.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. All right. So, the icy cold chill that everyone just experienced, it's okay. All those in favor of tabling or postponing--
Till later this evening.
Or postponing till--
Later in the meeting.
This is a move to table.
Till later.
It's a motion to table.
Table.
Under the rules, the chair can unilaterally move it later in the agenda unless there's objection. So, if you just want to do that, we don't need a vote.
Would everyone be okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. That would be my decision then. We'll wait until after we've deliberated the ordinances, which, also, given that I invested with that great power, I will move up in the agenda, given the fact that the audience is here.
Good idea.
Is there one, any, without any objection?
Can we just do the petition first?
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah. We'll do the petition first, and then we'll go on to the ordinances and then the resolution. How's that?
Sounds good.
I've seen a lot of nodding heads out in the audience, so that's encouraging. Okay. This is a petition, you heard it referred to in public comment. This is the undersigned pursuant to Mass General Law 8221, petition the Northampton City Council to accept Bottoms Road as a city street. And then it is, it is signed. And as I, now, let me see, I have to be clear on this. We--
That's a referral.
It can be a referral. Now, just, Counselors, just so we're clear on this, on this process here, this can be a referral back to the Board of Public Works for a petition to have for acceptance. But the history indicates that this has come from them already. They've gone through this and reviewed this, and there were a number of residents on Bottoms Road who were represented at the meeting. There was also a suggestion that there was lack of proper notification by some, some of the applicants. Although, you'll find, if you look in your packets, that there is representation that everyone was notified in timely manner. This is about a year ago, right? About a year ago? So, it's up to you. If we accept this and refer it, then we start the process over. If you're, if you're so inclined not to accept it, then that's the end of the issue.
I would move referral to the Planning Board and the Board of Public--
I second that.
Okay. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I think that, can we amend the referral also to the City Council Conference Committee with the Board of Public Works?
Any objections?
No. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second on that.
All right. So, the motion is to refer to the Board of Public Works and the Conference Committee. Any other discussion?
And to planning.
And to planning, I'm sorry, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right.
You want me to, uh, the right, who wants to do one-minute announcements, just to hold Who wants to do one-minute announcements, just to hold everyone's hearts beat a little longer? Does anyone have any one-minute announcements? No? I'll, uh, Counsel LaRice?
Veterans Day Parade, just a reminder on that. We are, it's gonna assemble at 10 o'clock AM. And the parade starts at 11 o'clock AM. And we will be meeting at the Latham Park on Broad Street. So hopefully all the counselors will be planning to attend and march on that. Also, there will be a continental breakfast for Northampton veterans on Tuesday, November 12th, from 9:30 to 10:30 at the Northampton Senior Center. And if you have any questions, please call the Senior Center at 587-1228. Thursday, November 7th to register. So that's that. And then I have another.
That would be today, wouldn't it? Get down to it.
And that's the Second Annual Safe School Summit, which you all received an email from our council clerk. I've got my registration in already, and I think it's an excellent summit to attend. And I'm hoping that you counselors really will have that. And then I have one more. The Florence Civic and Business Association, we need to look at our 24th Annual Holiday Parade on Saturday, November 30th. And we will be assembling at the Trinity Row Park at 9:30 AM. And the parade will begin at 10 o'clock AM. That's it.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy.
And I just wanted to mention that Florence Civic will be sponsoring a forum on stormwater on November 13th.
Friday. It's Friday the 13th.
No, it's a Wednesday. It's a Wednesday. And so I want to invite, anybody can come, but particularly Ward Five residents. And I think Counselor Tacey's extending, we're, Florence Civic covers five and seven mostly. So anyone's welcome and from anywhere in the city.
What's the time on that?
Seven o'clock.
Seven, thank you.
Any other one-minute announcements? All right. This is the ordinance. In the year 2013, upon the recommendation of the Planning Board, this is an ordinance of the city of Northampton, Massachusetts, providing that the code of ordinances of the city of Northampton, Massachusetts be amended by revising section 350-2.1, 8.1, 11.2, 11.6 of said code, providing that regulate medical marijuana and ensure traffic mitigation includes specific project fact-based analysis. Be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Northampton, the City Council assembled as follows. That section 350-2.1, 8.1, 11.2, 11.6 of code ordinances of the city of Northampton, Massachusetts be amended so that such section shall read as follows. Insert the following definition in alphabetical order, no other changes to section. Definition: Medical Marijuana, Medical Marijuana Treatment Center, MMTC, and Registered Marijuana Dispensary, RMD, defined and regulated by Massachusetts General Laws and the Massachusetts Department of Health Regulations, and along with any related land use owned, controlled, or contracted by the, by the MMTC where marijuana may be present. Medical marijuana is a subset of the medical uses and medical dispensaries and is allowed in any facilities where new physicians' offices, new dispensaries and pharmacies may be located, but not locations where medical uses and dispensaries are allowed only as a pre-existing non-conforming use and for any growing or processing without dispensaries in any industrial area. Also, this is 350-8.1, off-street parking, medical dentist's offices, and delete transportation terminal and replace with medical marijuana dispensaries, 200 feet of gross floor area. Let's see, and then projects requiring site plan approval as intermediate projects, insert new subsection F as shown, no other changes to the section. No building permit, zoning permit, or special permit shall be issued for the following intermediate projects prior to review and approval of the site plan in accordance with this section. Projects which involve new construction or additions of between 2,000 square feet and 5,000 square feet of gross floor area excluding single-family dwellings, expansions in the CB District, that do not involve footprint expansions and projects used exclusively for agriculture, horticulture, or floriculture.
Mr. President, isn't it just that we're adding medical marijuana facilities to a site, site plan approval?
Yes, that is, you see, Counsel Freeman Daniels asked that I cut through the chase. So section F is the addition of medical marijuana facilities, which is a much shorter sentence. The approval criteria, this is, amend paragraph B2 is shown to ensure a rational nexus between any traffic impacts and any necessary traffic mitigation. And the amended language reads now, in lieu of traffic mitigation, payment shall be assessed by the Planning Board after a fact-based analysis of a specific project, but shall not exceed that, that shown in the table below. Past experience has been that mitigation of all traffic impacts would be higher than the maximum amount allowed. And so many projects are assessed the maximum allowed by the table. And then second, insert the following into the first line of the table showing the commonly required payment for, in lieu of, in lieu of payments to fund a project's proportional share of necessary improvements to mitigate off-site traffic impacts. Requirement payment for mend mitigation fee table as follows. Any medical marijuana project, regardless of the district, will be $2,000 per peak trip. And that's regardless of all other entries below. And then third and last, insert in the table showing how peak hour trips are calculated, which now includes medical marijuana added to grocery, personal services, retail, and auto sales. Added to that language, fourth, let's insert the improve, the approval criteria, and this is the approval criteria. Medical marijuana operations shall meet the following criteria. A, hours of operation for any sale to the public and any distribution and delivery of marijuana shall be limited to 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. B, building facades and property must be consistent with the character of the neighborhood, including such items as transparent storefront windows with a view into the interior of the building. Security measures must appear from outside of the building to be consistent with the character of the neighborhood. This does not create any restriction or compromise on security measures, but does require that such measures be camouflaged to blend into the background. C, buildings must be ventilated with such filters or scrubbers to ensure that there are no odors from marijuana in any place where the public or clients are present and no public exposure to any pesticides, herbicides, or other chemicals. And then D, no medical marijuana dispensary and/or treatment center shall be located within 200 feet of any elementary school, middle school, high school, college, or university.
Move division.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to divide this question.
You want to divide it?
Yep. I'd like to divide 350-11.6.
Okay.
Approval criteria, it's paragraph two.
Okay. Do you want to speak to that first?
Second.
Okay. The motion's been made in second, dividing the issue, dividing the issue, so.
It's not debatable, but I can, the reason is that I, I'm not sure, it looks to me that there are two substantive things here. One is a change to traffic mitigation and another is, is the insertion of medical marijuana facilities here, and I'd like to take them separately.
Any other discussion on that? No, it's not debatable. All those in favor of dividing?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Would you like to move?
Oh, yeah, I'd like to move the, everything but, paragraph two.
Sorry, all right. So there's a...
Of 11.6.
Before we start, the council, I'll accept a motion, recognize Wayne Fiden.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Wayne, thank you.
Do you want me to talk about both ordinances now or just 11.6 to start with?
Let's, the ordinance in total minus that subdivision, so.
Okay. So in terms of medical marijuana, just to be clear, if you do nothing, medical marijuana is legal in this state and is legal, it would be legal in Northampton. There's a challenge with our ordinance, which is we lump things together. So we have retail and personal service establishments are allowed in some districts, medical offices are allowed in other districts. So there's really two main reasons to pass this from my standpoint. The first is to clarify that, yes, they're legal in which districts we think they're legal on. This isn't liberalizing anything, it's basically, so some communities are saying it's only allowed in some districts. The proposed language here is saying it's allowed in exactly the districts it would be if you didn't do anything, which is to say any place where doctors are allowed, any place where pharmacies are allowed, because those are, in essence, what these look and feel like. So that's sort of the main, the main important point is we're not trying to limit where they go in town. The second reason it's important is to spell out specific criteria for how we deal with mitigation. If you did nothing, the only mitigation would be the state standards, which creates a certain separation between medical marijuana uses and other uses. In writing our own ordinance, Planning Board and Ordinance Committee are recommending different numbers in terms of separation between medical marijuana uses and other uses, and then also mitigating other impacts, most specifically about traffic. We, major projects, we mitigate traffic impacts. Medical marijuana is no different from other major projects. It will have a lot of traffic, so in some ways the Planning Board was most concerned by the traffic aspects. If you remember, the state is guaranteed to issue one license per state, I mean, per county, minimum 19 licenses, and no more than 35, at least for this first round. That means these things that are being permitted are going to be fairly high-volume businesses. So we're at traffic and parking. So that section is really basically just the meat and potatoes of site plan of how do we mitigate those impacts.
Any questions? Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Thank you. Director Fiden, I, I noticed that no other, I mean, from how I'm reading the ordinance, no other facility of any kind is regardless of its district, its zoning, it's the district it's in, except for medical marijuana.
That's correct.
That's, that's surprising to me that, that the Planning Board believes, since you're representing, or are you representing the Planning Board or that you're, you're...
Both, Planning Boards.
Okay, so it's surprising that, that the Planning Board believes that the greatest threat to traffic in this city, of all the different kinds of development that we could have, is medical marijuana. I, I think that, I don't understand why it's not integrated with, with the central business and general business provisions that doesn't have traffic mitigation.
The issue is that the, the reason for the exemption in central business district and general business in particular is we get a lot of trip chaining. You, people come downtown and you go to multiple businesses at the same time. Medical marijuana, at least from arcs, from research we've done in other states, medical marijuana trips tend to be less likely to be a trip chaining. A lot of people who are buying the product are sick and they're going out and they're buying the product and they're going back in. And so we think there's more distinct trips that's out there.
I mean, even more so, I mean, even more than medical offices and other kinds of pharmacies that are in the same zone?
Well, as a practical matter, we almost don't get, we don't get new medical offices downtown. Because most offices have been, we have some small offices that are left, but most medical offices have moved away from downtown. They want places that are easy access.
Well, it's central business, but Florence...
It's central business, right.
But Florence is...
We get some there, absolutely.
So I'm, okay, I understand the, I understand what you're saying, but I don't agree with the reasoning.
Counsel Tacey?
I understand that, like, places like CVS are not going to sell pot.
Right, they sell OxyContin, but they don't sell it.
They don't get it. You're talking about prescription medication. And it's not going to be dispensed by a pharmacist. I just, just don't get it.
These are sort of the cards we're dealt with. I don't disagree, the state is requiring medical marijuana dispensaries be selling only one product, marijuana, whether it's, you know, whatever form it is, that's the product that they can sell. And so, yes, CVS can't legally sell. Now, as a practical matter, given the federal laws, I don't think CVS would want to sell it. So that may be part of it, but legally, we don't get a choice about that. Medical marijuana places, for at least now, will be separate businesses.
So we'll dispense prescription medication in a place without a pharmacist? That's okay, I guess. I guess somebody else has thought about it, put it together.
Counsel LaRice, you have a question?
Yeah. I kind of like feel the same way Counsel Casey does. So in other words, say, as an example, I wanted to go ahead and rent off a space, and that qualifies for what the speculations are. I don't have to be a pharmacist, I can just go ahead and be an owner of the business and distribute it, as long as that person has the identification and has been approved right by doctors or whoever they go through to get that marijuana.
So in essence, there's two approval processes. You, as a businessperson, would need to get a license from the state, ask Department of Public Health, and they have an extremely rigorous process. I can't tell you what pharmacists go through, but it's not that someone can just walk in and get a license. So they've gone through, they finished the first round of approvals, that was where we ended up with five applicants in Hampshire County, now going through the second round. So I don't think it's a matter of somebody who's not qualified being able to open a business, because the state is licensed in those things. In any case, the state is sort of covering the field as what the basic rules are. So they're the ones who write the basic rules, where we have authority is, communities couldn't even ban medical marijuana, but we have authority within our community, where is it allowed, and how do we mitigate impacts? So whether it should be a pharmacist or should be some license to buy public health, we don't get to decide.
So they do have to, whoever has to take or be qualified through the state in order to open that facility.
Again, for this first round, they're only up to 35 dispensaries for the entire state, and there's a lot more applications than that. So they get a lot more flexibility to narrow them down on the criteria that they're using.
Counsel Tacey?
So they're just, this hypothetically, then, marijuana is not going to be the, prescription of marijuana is not going to be contraindicated with a different drug, it's not going to have any adverse effect, you know? Lots of times pharmacists, they catch it when you get a prescription, they say, well, you're on this, you really shouldn't be on this. So there's probably, there must not be any implication there, huh?
You're outside of my expertise.
Yeah, that's why, I know.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Point of order. These issues are actually not within our purview. I mean, this has already been what the state has said, we may like it or not like it, but what we're deciding is, are we going to set, what are the rules that we are allowed to make? Are we going to make those or not? So it's not really the issue about the larger issues about whether it should be sold in a pharmacy or not, so.
My, the, the reason, and normally I would have moved to disallow some of that conversation, but I think, given the fact that this is a conversation that is, these are a number of questions that are being asked, are questions that are in a lot of people's minds.
Yeah, okay.
And, and, and we're still staying within the color of it, I think.
No, I think it's okay. I just wanted to, I think we can even keep discussing them. I just want to make sure we separate it out between what we can do and a philosophic debate, which we may want to still have.
Right. Counsel Carne?
I'm not sure if this is the portion that we separated out, so I have a question about the 200.
Just paragraph two, just paragraph two, just paragraph.
Is it the reference to the 200 feet?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
The approval criteria is...
Thank you, I just, in terms of breaking it to paragraphs. Okay. So I was struck at the Ordinance Committee meeting about when we looked at the map, especially in the commercial district downtown in that stretch of King Street, how many areas were excluded or would have been excluded by the 500-foot rule. And I know this, this discussion came up, it doesn't come up too often, but it did come up under adult use legislation some number of years ago, that really, that we have a pretty small, that it's, it's difficult, the way that the city of Northampton is spread out in terms of business districts and where places could locate. And so such a restriction, I can understand why the Planning Board looked at the 500 feet and really looked at what was available for space. And, and that became clear when we looked at the map. So I definitely am supporting the reduction from the 500 to the 200 feet. And I could even be persuaded, and I think we talked about this in the Ordinance Committee, to allow more available space to be used by looking at that specific restriction and limiting, and reducing that as well. But maybe you could talk for the audience here watching about how limited that would be with the...
So, so the state standards, which apply in any community... So, so the state standards, which apply in any community which doesn't pass their own ordinance, is five-hundred feet from any school, in any daycare facility, any place where youth congregate, which isn't as well-defined as I would like it to be. If you did that, you'd suddenly eliminate most of the places we allow pharmacies, you'd allow, eliminate Main Street in Florence, you'd allow it just on King Street and strip areas. And so, and five-hundred feet, just in terms of numbers, five-hundred feet is about two city blocks long. It's typically the distance, if you're, like most Americans, it's typically the distance that you are willing to walk from your car to where you're going. Then if you're going within five-hundred feet of your car, most people will park and walk. If you're going six-hundred feet, most people will get back in their car and drive, so, you know, that's typical distance. Planning board and then ordinance committee is suggesting reducing it in two ways. The first, the significant one is this, is going from five-hundred feet to two-hundred feet. The other one is probably actually even more significant, is we're only talking about this from schools, colleges, and universities. So we're not talking about daycare, because most six-year-olds are not buying marijuana legally or not legally, and we're not talking about places where youth congregate, because that's very difficult to define. And so that really is going to drop more. As a practical matter, when we look at those rings, when we look where the schools are, it is two-hundred feet around Smith College, which eliminates a very small amount of upper Main Street. It's two-hundred feet around schools, which eliminates a tiny portion on State Street by the Smith Campus School, and I believe, I'll have to look at a map to make sure that all the other schools are more than two-hundred feet from an area which would be eligible anyway. Actually, today, Montessori School, although they, you know, they've been moving, but, so those would eliminate fairly small areas.
Just to follow up to that, so if we did enact this legislation and a facility were to locate in a legal area now, what would the impact be if then a, a school were to locate there sometime in the future?
So zoning is proactive. When you come in, your use is then grandfathered. So if you come into a place and a school locates, you're grandfathered. It could be an issue if you want to expand it. So you come into a place and you're happy with your business, you can stay there forever, whatever happens around you. You want to come back next week and double it, then that could be an issue.
Counsel Casey.
There's no inventory limit in this, is there?
No.
Counsel Freeman Daniels.
I do think that there are going to be some amendments that might be flying fast and furious to this, so I'd like to get mine in and get all the council to vote it down before. And that's that amendment to the, after, in approval criteria, not in V2, but afterwards, any medical marijuana project outside of central business, general business, EBG, I, and OI zoning districts, that's my amendment.
Can you repeat the amendment?
It's, it's on the, on the, on the last page at the top, under any medical marijuana project regardless of the district. To eliminate regardless of the district. And to put in outside of CB, GB, EBG, I, and OI zoning districts. Basically make it consistent with, in many ways with the previous, with, with the rest of the.
Of the.
Parking, oh, traffic mitigation. And that's my, that's my proposed amendment, and I'll wait for a second before.
Oh, second.
Okay, thanks, so.
So for purposes of discussion, you want to expand?
Yeah, my reasoning on this is that I think that this traffic mitigation based regardless of district would make it very difficult for a medical RMD to, to provide significant improvements without a lot of, without having a lot of money in some of the more developed districts, central business, general businesses, are the two examples that come to mind. The city already, so I think that this is onerous. I also think that the city already has parking supply in these districts, that's a reason for eliminating the mitigation for every other use, and so I don't think that the medical marijuana use is outside of the bounds of basically every other use in these districts. So that's why I'd like to, that's the reasoning.
CB, GB, EBG, I, and OI. Yeah, I was going to say.
I would say, what saith Wayne to that? I think you've answered it earlier, but.
So, yeah, I mean, again, our concern is, so, there was a workshop that was done by Pioneer Radio Planning Commission, they brought in both attorneys of national practice and distributors from Denver, so we could sort of understand what's going on out there. And what they were saying is, if typical customers purchasing about two ounces, again, Denver, our experience, may be different here, but we're dealing, and so if there's only thirty-five of these state law, and you're dealing with one to three percent of the population in the entire state, that's a lot of customers. And so you'd be dealing with a lot of volume of business. Many of these areas we're talking about, central business, less than the other ones, although even central business, are not as pedestrian-friendly as we'd like them to be. And so we're dealing with a large volume of business, we should be dealing, we should be addressing those things. These are, you know, we, we treat each business differently, and this is a business that's going to be among the highest volume of traffic we'd get for any business. I think it's a good thing, it's just not critical whatsoever. The other thing, I will say, this has been reviewed by at least two of the applicants, potential applicants, and no one's expressed a concern about it.
This is based on speculative catchment, because, of course, we haven't had medical marijuana to date, and you're going based on other studies in other states, although Denver, it's, marijuana is legal to everybody, so that, but you're basing on previous dispensary.
So Denver's before was legal. Denver actually has something like three hundred dispensaries, so you'd actually expect less business per dispensary than Massachusetts that has thirty, will have thirty-five, state.
Counsel Spector, and then Counsel LeBarge, and then Counsel Schwartz.
Was this issue discussed at length when it came up at the planning board, when they discussed this?
Ordinance committee, they voted on it, but there wasn't much discussion.
But at the planning board, when there was a lot of discussion, was, was there a specific vote around this, and if so, what was the vote?
It was part of the overall specific discussion about it when they first sponsored it.
Okay.
Counsel LeBarge, if you'll allow me, Counsel Schwartz has another chance to ask.
I guess I, I feel like what you're calling an onerous burden, if we're not, I don't want to say that because they didn't hear from the people in time, maybe upon reflection and with this debate, they'd stand up and go, yes, yes, spare us this, but I'm hard-pressed to call something an onerous burden, that the people who would experience it are not expressing as an onerous burden, when in fact, there's evidence that suggests it's warranted and the revenue, you know, mitigation fees are really important. And so I, I just, I feel very compelled to follow the best evidence that we have, which isn't, you know, which is limited inherently, because we haven't done it here yet, but I would want to support this as written.
Counsel LeBarge, then Counsel Murphy.
Yes. Wayne, I was a little concerned on the fourth part of it, about the holders of marijuana.
Counsel, we're, we're speaking on an amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So if we could speak to that.
Okay.
Do you have any questions on the amendment?
No.
Counsel Murphy. And, and this is for Counsel Freeman Daniels, or actually both, that I'm sure you have opinions, and they may actually be different. Make a correlation between two thousand dollars per peak trip and relief of the issue. You know, I, I'm going to be putting one of these in, and somebody does the math, and presto, they come up with twelve peak trips, and that's twenty-four thousand dollars, or whatever the math is. How does that relieve the problem? Or does, how, how is that money, if we make this happen, how is that money actually going to mitigate the issue?
Question directed to you, so. But I think that Wayne has a long history with this.
Yeah, I mean, it is expertise from transportation and parking.
So what I can say is that I, Wayne and I, I think we all, I think Wayne and I agree that the more money we can put in the city's coffers for traffic mitigation means the more pedestrian projects we can, we can get accomplished. I mean, it's, it's actually, I don't think that's really up for debate, the more money you have, the more things you can get accomplished. But, but the, but, and so, what I foresee is probably more than twelve per, I mean, I perceive quite, quite, this being a significant bill. I'm not sure whether the applicants realize that. I, I don't, I don't know, I don't, I can't, I don't know whether they looked at this as a significant bill, and I, but I do think that this will be a significant bill. And I, and I don't think that, and in fact, we're not treating, we don't treat different businesses differently, we treat zones differently. So every other business, every other business, I mean, you could, you know, you could think about these popular nightclubs in, in Northampton, where the, the traffic gets, is very, is very high, right? Every other business, we treat the same, except for the medical marijuana facilities. So what, what happens in other, in other districts for traffic mitigation is that a dollar amount is calculated, and I, I'm speaking now for Wayne for the most part, but a dollar amount is calculated, and the planning board will, will ask for, or, or staff will ask for particular upgrades, and if the, and if the applicant doesn't want to do them, they'll just pay the money. And so, but the problem is that many of these issues, many of these, within the, within these districts, there's not a lot of space to, to create these upgrades. So what, what will end up happening is that the applicants, I think, will just pay the money. And I think they're going to end up paying a lot of money. And I don't know if that, like I said, I, just because they haven't said it, doesn't mean that it's not going to be onerous. And, and maybe, maybe Wayne can elaborate, but what we end up doing with these funds is we usually group, we take them from different projects and group them into one bucket, and then try to do something significant for it. Like, for instance, central business, we might try to shorten the crosswalks or something like that, but it's, that's expensive, so we'd have to take.
But it does not necessarily relate to the specific property that the money came from, so.
Has to be connected to a neck, has to be connected, in some respect.
Okay. So you can't, this wouldn't provide speed bumps and lead somewhere when the thing's on King Street.
No, no, it has to be in a nexus, yeah.
In that vicinity to affect that problem there.
That's right, but I, but I just, I want to re, I just want to emphasize, this is the only kind of business, the only kind of business, that we're singling out for general business and central business.
And to that point, I would like to add that we do not craft law based on the will or the desire or the level of complaint by a specific applicant. We're creating zoning, we're not creating an application process for any clients. So in that sense, we have to be fair, and we have to be consistent, because, and I remember the debate that came up when we were talking about King Street zoning, and the resistance to parking mitigation fees and, and so on, for, for some of the same reasons. And my concern here is that we find, we have a situation where applicants are eager, for obvious reasons, to, to establish here, given, as you said, that there's a potential for a pretty good guaranteed business, that we may be, by special rule, exploiting that eagerness, and while that sounds tempting, it also doesn't sound fair. Yeah.
So, two important rules. One is Counsel Freeman Daniels mentioned, one that's critical, which is the, we can only spend the money in the area which benefits that business, that's required. That's why we hold a fair amount of money, because projects come in, we have to spend it in that area that benefits them. The other one, which we're going to talk about more when we get to the other ordinance, which you've separated, but we need to show that there's a direct proportionate impact from a project. So if a project comes in and their fee would be forty thousand dollars, and we can only just show that they're going to have a thirty thousand dollar impact, that we need to do thirty thousand dollars in mitigation, we can't charge them the extra piece. So we have to do a case-by-case, fact-based situation. So if, in fact, someone's coming downtown, and it's not going to have an adverse impact in terms of pedestrian safety and traffic, then we wouldn't be charging them. We have, you know, we have to do that in case-by-case assessment.
Counsel Casey.
So do they base the thirty-five locations on, on what? On the number of prescriptions they anticipate?
Counsel, I'm sorry, we are speaking on an amendment.
I know.
You'll, you'll have an opportunity.
It all plays together, though.
Counsel, we can get to your question if you just vote yes on this amendment.
You'll have an opportunity to weigh in on that, but. We, we are speaking on the amendment, and so that we can get out of here before we age out, that we'll do it according to protocol, if you, if you don't mind, and.
There just seems to be so much speculation.
I know.
And I think those are valid questions. I don't discount it as a valid question, it just is not speaking to the amendment. So if, if we could speak to the amendment, then as, as Counsel Freeman Daniels, we either voted up or down, then we can move on to those questions. Are there any other questions to the amendment?
Yeah, I'll address it in a second, but what I guess I'm hearing is that on one side, we're saying this, this business is being treated unfairly, kind of we're shaking down the, this facility, and your response was, well, there are specific reasons for that because of the kind of traffic. And then Counsel Daniels said, well, we have other businesses similar, a nightclub. I guess I'd like to hear that response to, are there other businesses that are similar? Or is this a, a real unique case of this business has this particular kind of traffic, and that's why we need to do this in this particular case?
I guess the honest answer is some of both. Certainly, there's other very high-traffic generators, nightclub is a good example, which doesn't, you know, which is example downtown. Two things, one is this is, tends to be on a per-square-foot basis, probably one of the highest traffic generators per square foot. Many of these uses tend to be fairly small, so they're not going to generate, Walgreens, for example, on King Street, paid about a hundred fifty thousand dollars in traffic mitigation. It's the same formula for Walgreens, it's a much bigger square footage, so these things you'd expect to pay much less. So, so the volume is definitely maybe unique for these things. The trip chaining is the other piece, and obviously, many people go to a nightclub and then go home. But I would argue that one of the reasons that Northampton is successful in hospitality business, and Springfield maybe less so, is that Springfield has wonderful restaurants and wonderful nightclubs, but they don't make a whole story. So you go in, you meet somebody at a restaurant, and then you leave. Northampton, when I meet friends, I meet downtown, and then we figure out what we're about. And so there's that, more of that synergy of, of making it together. I don't think I'm like, and, and some people will, some people will get tea after buying their medical marijuana, but given that a cash I have to bring in when I'm buying the product, you know, so on the average, maybe eight hundred dollars in cash I'm bringing in, because they don't take credit cards, and given that a product I'm leaving with, it's unlikely I'm going to spend a lot of time with eight hundred dollars in my cash or two ounces of marijuana in my pocket. So, and, and that's been borne out, at least by experience, in, in Denver. So, so that's the part that's unique about this.
Counsel Adamson, Counsel Murphy.
I, I support this amendment, I think it's not only unfair, in my opinion, it's punitive, and, and I support the amendment, and I call the question.
Questions been called. Roll call on this. Would you repeat the amendment?
Yeah, that any medical marijuana project outside of central, CB, GB, EBG, I, and OI zoning districts, two thousand dollars per peak trip, regardless of other entries below.
You want to delete?
Delete regardless of the district.
Point of information, I, I just moved to call the question, the council can vote it down if they, they want more discussion on this matter.
Okay, so the questions been called, this, all the, the questions been called, are all those in favor of calling the question?
There's no second, I'm sorry, there's no second.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. All those in favor of closing?
Aye.
No, calling for the amendment.
For the amendment.
Yeah.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Case closed, questions called, roll call, please. We're calling, this is a roll call for the amendment that is, is iterated by Counsel Freeman Daniels.
Counsel Carney?
No.
Counsel White?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Counsel LeBarge? No. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
No.
Counsel Spector?
No.
Counsel Casey?
No.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Oh, yes, five no.
Okay.
But it's zoning.
But it's zoning.
That's, that's for the final ordinance.
It's a, it's just for the amendment.
Yes, so that's, okay, it doesn't have the same.
Does it, is that the rule, I mean, does the amendment?
Oh, that's a good question.
I don't know the answer.
Yeah, we, we conduct normal business until, until zoning.
Yeah.
Until the zoning vote.
That's what I understand, is that we, that those thresholds come for the final vote. This is on an amendment.
So the amendment passes, then?
There were, the vote was four yes, five no.
Five no, okay.
All right, back to the, the main motion. The main motion that does not include the approval criteria.
I'm confused, did the vote just pass or not?
No, it did not pass it, the motion fails, the amendment failed.
Saying about the, about being zoning.
Then it is awful.
That, right, and, and, and it's my understanding, we'll find out, of course, but I'm pretty sure, and I, I think Counsel Freeman Daniels agrees with me that, that the, those criteria apply to the final vote on the final. apply to the final vote on the final disposition of the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, and it doesn't matter anyway, because it only had four votes, it just would've meant it needed six votes, so.
Passed, not to fail.
For future reference, we would know, but.
Yeah. So the amendment fails, we're back to the main motion minus the approval criteria.
Everything but 11-6.
We're, he's only separated one, that's the second paragraph, the approval criteria. So we're talking about everything else but the approval criteria.
Everything but paragraph two of the approval criteria.
Thank you, yes, yes, yeah, I'm sorry, paragraph two.
Has this part been moved yet?
Uh, this has been moved, it's placed on the floor, that's why he was able to amend it.
Okay, good.
You separated 11-2 and 11-6, didn't you?
Correct, and then he.
11, 11-6, B2.
Didn't do anything with 11-2, you just.
That's right. Just 11-6, B2, the bottom part of page two.
And, and the rest is removed, and that's what we're back to discussing. And Counselor Tacey, the question that you were queuing up, you're invited to ask now. Right now, we're debating and discussing. The rest, as it were, yes, as opposed to the approval criteria, which will be separate. Okay. Counselor Tacey, did you wanna ask your question?
Mary, I feel your pain, I'm as damn confused about it as you are.
Trying to keep all the.
My, the thirty, the, my question about the 35 locations throughout the state, I, I just, it baffles me how they're gonna, how you would figure this out and how you would. I remember when they wanted to put, this is a little bit off the record here, but they had a drive-up window at the Pride Station. They said, well, we're gonna have probably maybe 100 cars going through there in a day. Look at what they've got. It's a, I'm just, I wonder where you're gonna put this, and the, the traffic is the biggest deal here for me. And did they base the 35 locations on the number of prescriptions they feel they're gonna put out in a particular region, or?
I don't know, frankly, I just know that what the buzz is, whether buzz is accurate or not, which is.
If they had 25,000 prescriptions per month in this, in Hester County, I'm, I'm curious, as to, are we gonna handle them all in Northampton?
So I believe the reason they're limiting the number is they just wanna go slow, that I assume there will be additional rounds in the future for more dispensaries. But they only wanna handle so many as they get, as they get the, the kinks out of this system, make sure it works. So I'm sure there'll be additional rounds.
So if we get so definitive on this, are we gonna, will we offering changes to it as we, as we go along? Will we revisit this?
So, like with zoning, I, I of course think we're brilliant, we never need to come back, but if two months from now we realize we did something wrong, yes, we're coming back. Right, so we have no plans to come back, but absolutely, we learn from, not only our experience, but you can guess, there's lots of listservs buzzing around the state. So as we learn from experience in other states, as we learn from experience within this state, we amend as necessary. And I assume public, health, the state public health.
So when we do locate these, so we'll look at bus routes and things such as that, and.
Right, so.
Reliability.
Remember, zoning, zoning is proactive, so whoever gets licensed, we don't get another crack at them. Other uses we may. Public health regulations are not proactive, so the state or the city board of health could adopt regulations. They found some safety issue that's out there, they can change the rules that automatically apply to existing businesses. That's not, that's not the zoning part, zoning only be for new businesses. But if the state suddenly says, okay, we need a different kind of licensing of owners, we wanna have a test of owners, the state has the right to do that, and to change the.
Questions? Okay.
Yeah.
Counselor Freeman Daniels?
It takes a minute to come up with these.
All right. I'll wait, I'll, I'll yield to Counselor Tacey.
Counselor Tacey?
118 Conde Street, where is that located?
Down here.
It was down there somewhere, where's it?
See, old medical, uh, old medical building down across from Gazette.
Okay. Way down, by Pleasant Journey.
Yes, yes.
Which is already a huge traffic. As we get down to where we're gonna put a roundabout at some point, because of the traffic is so bad. I'm just trying to be careful as to where you would place, and I haven't got, I think it needs, I need, I think it needs a lot of, a lot of discussion, you know.
Counselor.
I'm done.
Okay, Counselor Freeman Daniels or Counselor Adams?
You can.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll take another stab at an amendment here. On, I'd like to move to amend, under approval criteria 4D, no medical marijuana dispensary and/or treatment center shall be located within 200 feet of an elementary school, middle school, high school, college, or university.
This is, now we're on to the second portion of the, so. But that has not been moved yet.
No, no, this is the.
The approval criteria?
Mr. President, the only thing I wanted to, to divide was paragraph B2.
Just B2, okay.
So you wanna strike D?
No, I don't wanna strike it, I'd like to.
Amend it.
Yeah, amend it, amend, amended by striking college or university and strike 200 and replace it with 50.
Recommendations to reduce the buffer to 50 feet.
Second?
And who strike, and to strike college and university.
That's right. No medical marijuana dispensary and/or treatment center shall be located within 50 feet of any elementary school, middle school, high school, period.
Uh, motions are made in second, and we're gonna discuss this amendment now, Counselor.
Could you discuss again why the 200-foot buffer was talked about? Because we heard earlier from public comment that there was some question about having no buffer whatsoever, and then it was decided on the 200 buffer, and why the 200 buffer ended up being the one that was proposed.
First of all, I will say that I don't think the planning board, at least speaking for them, would have any objection to this amendment. They were trying to find a, you know, the, there were several advocates from the public health community who were lobbying for bigger numbers and more things, and the planning board was trying to find some compromise. I don't think, again, I don't think they had any problem, as a practical matter, what you do from schools doesn't much matter, because there's not a lot of commercial areas around, so the main effect of this change would be the Smith College area, Green Street and, and Upper Main Street. And again, I don't think the planning board have any objection to that. What's important to have something or some of the language is the state says 500 feet applies unless local government's regulating it different. So if you suddenly left it silent, then you'd be back to 500 feet. So having something or other word saying we've discussed this. Again, the number, I'll leave to you, there's no magic behind them. You know, advocates in the public health community will say, this is an issue about the messaging, that medical marijuana is important to allow, the voters have asked for that, we're worried about messaging for our youth. What the planning board feels, and what a lot of advocates in medical marijuana will say, is if someone walking by suddenly wants to buy drugs illegally, we have a greater problem. That the security requirements of these places are very strict, and that the criminal penalties for buying medical marijuana and then selling it are actually greater than the criminal penalties for buying marijuana illegally and then selling it. And so it's unlikely you get the sales as a result of being close by. No one's gonna buy it and sell in the back alley.
Can I? Yeah, I just wanna remind everyone that also in public comment, we heard from one of the public health people who were advocating for the 500-foot and go to the state regulation and just use that as our default, so.
Counselor Adams?
I'll paraphrase the, the planning director a little bit. What I heard from the board of health director, and also from the coalition prevention member, was that the concern was about, as Director Fines said, exposure and messaging. So it was, it was, it was a sentiment, in my opinion. But again, I don't think, I don't think that, I requested some, some data that's, that showed if there is a higher incidence of marijuana usage when a school is located near a dispensary in the states that have them, or if there's a higher incidence of substance abuse in schools that are located near dispensaries, and there is not available. So I think it's, it's, it's nothing more than, than a, than a, than a message that I don't really think belongs in the ordinance, as I suggested to the coalition. If there should be a message, then we can put that in a resolution that states we don't want marijuana near children, near minors, and simply because we're approving zoning and a dispensary may come here, that does not mean that we want children near the substance, and that we agree that marijuana and children don't mix. That's the place to do it, in my opinion, would be in a resolution. But the facts do not support that proximity to a school creates any likelihood at all that there will be greater usage of marijuana of minors, thank you.
Counselor LeBarge, on the amendment.
Wayne, on the ordinance that we put in many, many years ago, on 500 feet, nude entertainment within the schools, and this one does not have a church on it, so why is there not a church?
So again, I, I think the feeling is it's the messaging about youth that, that public health advocates are worried about. And that's sort of a issue for, for churches for doing it.
And, and I also think it's important, you're talking about entertainment. This is not entertainment, and, and in part, and, well, the, the difficulty here is, and it's been the difficulty with this conversation ongoing, is marijuana is transitioning from an illegal substance and all the, all the culture and attitudes that go towards that. It is now recognized pretty widely, and certainly recognized by the state of Massachusetts, as having medicinal purposes, and we're talking about medicinal services. We're not talking about strip clubs, we're not talking about porn stores. We're talking about the equivalent of apothecary, providing healthy alternatives and pain medication for people that, that is now legal in the state of Massachusetts. Eighty-one percent of the people in this community voted in favor. The concern is that when we, I think when we bring the debate down to the point where we're classifying or categorizing or considering them the same as adult entertainment, we're doing a horrible disservice to the spirit that was, that was emphatically voted to express that this is another alternative for people who are suffering, and can be, and those, that suffering can be abated by consumption of modified marijuana products. That's, it's, we are, we do not want to turn anyone who's considering entering this business, or turning anyone who's considering using this business or being prescribed to this business as a pariah. I mean, it's important that we just, and that's, my only concern is that when we, when we have this discussion, and, and the other aspect of this discussion is, of course, because we're all new to this, and when I say we, I'm talking about the state, the caution has been, by my reckoning, excessive, but by others, it's been intense. I think we can all agree here, that all the criteria that have been established for this, we don't have parallel criteria applying to any other system that's being, that's working like this. It's unique, as Counselor Spector pointed out. And so I don't want to, I, I want us to be careful when we continue, when we consider this. We're talking about authorizing a sanctioned medical dispensary in the community. We're not talking about porn movies and, and, and strip clubs, because that's.
I understand that, Counselor. I'm concerned about what I had heard from Marissa, okay, about the amount of footage of the 200, and I was asking a logical question, if we went 50 feet on an ordinance before, I wanted to know what would be the difference here.
I'm sorry, I, okay, I was asked, I heard you asking about why didn't we include churches and things like that.
Right, that's why I wanted to know, we included.
Right. Uh, Counselor, I, I'm sorry, Wayne, you were, you wanted to say something?
Just one, one suggestion, if, if you can, pass this amendment, it's probably worth adding at the end language specifically to the fact of there are no other buffer requirements. I wouldn't want, in dropping colleges, I wouldn't want someone to, to say, oh, that means you're going back to the state default of 500 feet. So just spelling it out to say, these are buffer requirements.
There are no.
Yeah, I accept that, I, I mean, I wish that that were in there before, because we did, the daycare was eliminated, right? But that was in the state one, so.
I think you're right.
Okay, all right.
I should've had it before.
Good.
So. Would, would you express a friendly amendment for, uh, Mary, so that she can?
So after high school, there'd be a semicolon, and we should say there are no other buffer requirements.
Limitations.
Limitations.
Limitations, or limitations.
And Counselor Schwartz?
I, I feel like the 200 feet feels like a compromise. It feels like we've got a state recommendation that we, the planning board rejected, revised, and revised downward, and I, I feel like in view of the commentary that we've heard from the public health community and the fact that we have a state recommendation, which I, I hear you're calling it excessive caution, I think, truthfully, I will concede that my, my frame is influenced anecdotally by being the parent of three teenagers. And I feel like there is, there is a, it, it, we don't, uh, there's a mixed message inherent in this. In that, there's just, I mean, literally, like we're saying, don't use marijuana, but medically, you know, we, we have the level of sophistication to understand the, the incredible need for medical marijuana. And I would prefer there being as much of a buffer as possible in the, in that messaging, in the exposure that you're talking about, Jesse, I mean, what, 'cause I, my issue is not that therefore there's, we're gonna necessarily track an increase in use, I mean, I totally acknowledge the research isn't there for that. There is a, an atmos, an environment that I would like, I'd like to keep the messaging as clean as possible, and no matter what, it's going to be messy necessarily, appropriately, because, because medical marijuana is a, is a really essential thing for many people. And so that's the dinner table talk, as much as you can, you know, you can do it. But I have, I feel like I have no problem with a little bit of a greater buffer, and I feels, and again, again, acknowledging the sort of emotional pull of, on that, and that, that may be rebuttable on a more intellectual level.
But you were directing that at me somewhat, and if, if I could respond, it's just that the sophistication that we ascribe to ourselves about this messaging, I think that messaging's completely lost distance-wise on the people that we're trying to influence. A child doesn't know the difference between a 200 and 50-foot buffer or what the message is, is being, trying to be transmitted. I think that, and, and, and as far as mixed messages, this is why Marissa's job is so hard. Because that's, we are, we are a culture committed to mixed messages. Why is alcohol and tobacco very lethal systems, that have no palliative care value at all, allowed to be sold within any school?
Totally, so, but then you just, you can't throw the baby out with the bathwater, I mean, yes, so imperfection doesn't mean more imperfection.
And as I was saying, is, is to Counselor Adams' point, it's, it's, it's more of feeling, as you expressed, and as more as anyone else is expressing, it's a feeling that's not necessarily substantiated with data, that, that 50 feet versus 100 feet versus 200 feet versus a mile is any, has any good or negative impact on a child's impression of what's allowed and what's not allowed? Or encouraged and not encouraged?
Well, there is a practical matter of whether you're more or less likely to walk by it.
That's, that's true, but then.
That's just my, that's, that's all.
But walking by.
I mean, I don't mean, I don't need to hide it, I don't need to hide it, I just, I, you know, that's, it's, it's, to me, it's a, it's a great fact of life that this is gonna be available to people, it's a great fact of life for those who need it. I just, to me, then I go, okay, I'm confused, there's, this is an emotional thing, I've got the state who that said 500, we got the planning board that said 200, okay, so that's, I mean, I'm just giving you where I go, like, that's, I'll land there.
And just to clear up, the state, as Wayne has pointed out, the state's criteria is essentially the default. It's saying, in the absence of anyone else acting in any other mode, and leaving it up to the community. But in the absence of that, this is the default. It's not necessarily the standard that they are saying they're recommending communities a bye-bye, so. Uh, Counselor Tacey, I'm sorry.
The, uh, the 200 feet from a school, I mean, I'm trying to think of a school, except. The 200 feet from a school, I mean, I'm trying to think of a school, except, you know, we've got one on maybe Bridge Street where you might possibly have something close for a school, but...
People's Institute.
The highest traffic areas in the city are the schools. I mean, then if this is going to incur more traffic, why couldn't it be something like, maybe place it in the ordinance where it won't affect or won't impact the already high traffic in the school zones? It's all about the traffic. I'm on board with medical marijuana. I mean, I think it's about time. I just get very, very cautious about where you place them.
Wayne, how are you categorizing People's Institute?
It would be daycare, but it wouldn't be...
A school.
We're defining schools specifically as, you know, elementary, middle, high school, or college, university.
Okay.
It's a residential area, too.
People's Institute?
No, I think it's Hill Institute, I'm sorry. Mixed the two.
What about the James House?
James House, which is actually an educational facility, now it's the...
I think it's the city schools, and Bridge Street School is the only one that is within 200 feet of commercial district.
But the James House is kind of a satellite for Greenfield community, and, I mean, there are...
So we go back to what you're dropping?
I'm wondering if...
College, university.
Right, right.
It's adult education.
Right.
So if you're, if you're leaving college in, yes, that'd be fine, right?
Okay, but this amendment does two things. It drops the buffer and it eliminates the...
Correct.
Counsel Murph.
I mean, this really comes down to a feel-good number.
Yes.
Because we really don't have any evidence one way or the other. We're whacking the state limit of 500 down to 200, and there's, and there are people that, and people who have a stake here that have said, "Please don't do that, we like 500." I mean, I'm comfortable taking it down to 200, but I don't know if I want to go lower. I mean, my feeling is, we can't prove any number, but that dropping it lower is considerably more disrespectful to the public health folks who are already upset with us for going to 200. But it really is a feel-good number.
By the way, I believe the applicants were asking for 200, not 500.
Yeah.
They were at, they were 200. You, I think, misspoke and said they were okay with 500.
Oh, no, no, the Board of Health, the Coalition, those folks. The applicants were happy with 2, so we said, "Fine, we'll get away with that." Going below that, to me, it's just a tad disrespectful. And I think the police also chimed in, "Would they like 500?" So we're, you know, I see no need to go below that if that is enough to make everybody happy.
Counsel Adams.
I disagree, there's disrespect. This is about what's the best and most sensible policy we can make, and that's why I'm considering the lack of data to show any correlation between marijuana dispensaries and incidents of marijuana usage. So I don't think it's really about a lack of respect or not. I think we've heard them respectfully, and we, some of us respectfully disagree.
Counsel Freeman Daniels and Counsel Carney.
I'd like to perform some action here. I, I'm going to, I'd like to withdraw the 50-foot amendment, but keep the striking of college and university.
Thank you.
So you want to retain the 200-foot buffer?
Yeah, but I need a second on that.
I'll second that.
I think, actually, it was Counsel Adams who seconded it.
He was, he was seconded.
I'm not seconding. But I will, I will second.
Counsel Adams.
Then we can't, then we can't withdraw.
You need the friendly...
Can't withdraw.
It's got to be him to be friendly.
I was the friendly amendment.
Could you explain, I think I know why, but I think it was a good reason why you were even making that suggestion?
That's...
The rationale behind it.
I need a, I think we need Counsel Adams to second.
So let me say then, since I'm not, I'm not doing it as a motion.
Actually, I think I sec, I gave the friendly amendment to...
No, you can't.
The original amendment was seconded by Counsel Adams, and he refused.
And he refused.
So since I'm not... I'm not making a motion to change anything?
Every order of Roberts' Rules of Order, he's...
Stick him with it.
So valuable lesson to everybody, if I wanted me to.
I'm just rejoining the discussion. I am not talking to changing an amendment. However, I think the counselor was picking up on that sense of, "This is not such a huge thing here, guys." And I think there is just a level of, we talked about messaging in one way about what's the message, whether it's near the school or not, and I agree, there's probably not, you know, there's no doubt on that. But there is a message of saying, there was some compromise reached here, and there are some folks, whether it's the police or the public health community, saying 500 feet, you know what, we could say, "We totally disagree with that." But because it's not that big a thing, and because there is a group of people saying, "We really want this," I sensed that what was going on was saying, "You know what? Let's keep it at the 200 feet." Because I do agree, I think there is some sense of saying, "We're not going to listen to you at all on this." And I really do not think, if we look at the practical matter here, it is so insignificant that I would say, "Let's keep it at the 200 feet with that compromise."
Counsel Carney then.
Thanks. I want to go back. We're actually trying to do at least two things with this amendment, if I'm correct. Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Gentlemen.
We're trying to decrease the buffer, but also take out the reference to college and university. In my sense, that reference to college and university, it is important to be deleted from that, first of all, because, you know, those are adults, 18-year-old, 18 and older, and because, you know, there is not just Smith College, but there's also the James House that is proximate to many locations. And so I'm afraid that if we, although I understand that the counselor is hesitant to second the amendment, the change, and I'm afraid that the amendment will fail...
It can be reintroduced.
It can be reintroduced, okay.
More information, we can vote on this.
And then...
If it fails, we can just do a motion right after.
It seems as though it's very close, and that seemed odd that you, it's close enough that it would be difficult for that to be introduced, but I'll defer to the chair, and so...
How about this? Why don't we call the question? We'll vote on that, see if it survives. If it doesn't survive, then the counselors are welcome to...
Try again.
Try again.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you read it?
Yes, Mary, do you have?
This is the one that would take the, from 200 to 50, and call it, and ask, and do all the buffer...
Correct. So reduce the buffer zone down to 50 feet from 200.
Eliminate college and universities.
And then eliminate college and universities as being, so college, it can be put near college and universities if it survives.
So we're going from now 200 to 50 feet.
That is the proposal.
That was the amendment that we're going to vote on now.
So I'll ask the clerk to call the rule. Um, yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Counsel LeBarge?
No.
No.
Counsel Court?
No.
Counsel Specter?
No.
No.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
That's a five-four split again. The amendment fails. Counsel Murphy?
I have another question for Mr. Fiden before another motion pops up. And I have to speak to that. But since you've been forced to step outside zoning and learn about marijuana to deal with all of this, and a lot of what we're talking about is sort of the proliferation of this substance outside of the controlled nature of these dispensaries, and has there been, and I think we all have to admit, that there's a pretty good freelance market in Northampton right now. I mean, these people that are going to dispensaries, they know this stuff works for them for a reason, okay? They probably are, you know, shopping wherever they shop now, and they can go to the controlled environment of dispensary. Has there been any estimate what the impact of a dispensary in Northampton will make to the freelance market? Maybe we'll call it the freelance market. At all, in any of the, in any of the studies in any of the communities that are doing this, how much does it cut down on the business in Pulaski Park once people have a legal avenue to go to?
It's an excellent question. I unfortunately don't know the answer.
And again, my concern to that is that we're talking about recreational drug use versus medicinal drug use. There is a distinction. We already have, we do have systems in place of medical dispensaries that, and the abuse of prescription drugs is high. Is it high because of its access through pharmacies? Probably.
I think Counsel Murphy's absolutely right. There is some number of people who have legitimate uses, medical uses, who are buying it illegally now because it's not available. I don't know the answer of what that is, but there's some...
Theoretically, once a dispensary opens and they have a legal way to, and they need it and they're prescribed, it's going to reduce the demand in the general illegal market because they now have a place to go to. But what we're talking about really is the illegal market. We talk about distances from this and distances from that. And I know, when the high school's in session, the pungent owner of marijuana is still going to emanate from Charles Park, no matter where the hell the dispensary is. It's been, I was there 40 years ago, it's still there today. You know, no matter what the Coalition says, it still happens under the trees in Charles Park. So to some extent, I mean, we're, you know, what we're talking about is not the dispensary business, we're talking about the general market business, and I'm assuming that's going to go down somewhat if some of the users now have a legitimate way to purchase their product. So it may actually have a positive effect on this street effect when we channel these folks into a legal medium.
Counsel Carney then.
Positive is a...
Well, I'd just like to reintroduce the amendment, keeping it at 200 feet, but deleting the reference to college and university, adding the semicolon and the previously mentioned language.
Second. So you, okay, the amendment...
Everything it was, except 200 instead of 50.
Semicolon, too.
Call the question.
Can we...
Can we call the question on the amendment? On the amendment?
Exactly. Thank you. And I, and just an observation, I cannot believe we have had this much discussion about hot in our gallery, almost empty.
We don't do it to the gallery. We don't speak to the gallery. We make law, and that's what we're trying to do now.
I'd like to call the question, since we had a lengthy discussion about the same...
It's called, any, and all those in favor calling the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Roll call, please, Mary.
What are you doing?
We're voting on the amendment that still, that allows the 200-foot buffer, but eliminates colleges and universities from the criteria of buffers.
Any other, any other buffer requirements. Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Yes?
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Tacey?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you.
Most of a consensus.
Change so far...
That is the only amendment that has survived.
The only thing we've changed so far is... College and university. Taken out college and university, put a semicolon, no other buffer limitations.
Yes.
And an or before high school. And an or before high school. Insert.
All right. Back to the main question.
It's a lot of minutes per word, isn't it?
I think we have more. Anymore?
No, no.
This?
No, we haven't done the main question.
There was an "I."
Right.
11.6 B2, first paragraph of B2.
Yeah.
Is what's, is what's out of this question right now.
Yeah, just that, just that, yeah, just sure.
The not the second part is...
Counsel Adams.
A, hours of operation, eight to eight.
I'm sorry, where?
Where are you? Hours of operation.
Where is it?
It's the final paragraph of the whole...
4A.
4A, thank you.
4A.
I'm moving to strike this, and the reason why is because I don't think it's fair. If your medicine is, for example, a prescribed opiate or prescribed amphetamine, both of which are arguably more dangerous than marijuana, you can go to 24-hour pharmacies and you can get your medicine. Why then, if your medicine is marijuana, should you have to go between the hours of eight and eight? People from marijuana suffer from very debilitating diseases, just as people who suffer from other diseases who can go to pharmacies that are open 24 hours. Thank you.
A second.
Okay, the motions are made, second now, the amendment...
Can I ask a question, though?
Yeah.
Is this the case, Director Fiden, is it the case that if the council is silent on hours of operation, that state laws...
That's what I'm looking up right now.
I can answer that.
Counsel Adams.
The regulations state that municipalities can impose reasonable restrictions on time.
But there are no, there are no standards that the state...
As a friendly amendment, could we actually say, "Shall be unlimited," rather than saying, "Shall be limited from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM?"
Certainly.
There's an important distinction I want to stress here. So generally, zoning is silenced to hours, and those are reasonable conditions the planning board can impose. So if you just strike this, it gets rid of all the requirements. So the same goes for CVS. The planning board does sign and impose hours restrictions, particularly when things are close to neighborhoods.
Did we see that there is a state, is there any state recommendation regarding...
It sounds like you don't...
Okay.
I think we should just strike.
Hang on, everyone stay in order, please. Counsel Carney, you were done with the question?
Well, I offered a friendly amendment with the understanding that there may be a state, state guidance on this, but hearing from the director that there is none, I can withdraw that friendly amendment to the amendment.
Counsel Specter.
Do we, Wayne, do we currently have any hours set for CVS on Main Street or at other places, or are they just, they're free to do whatever?
Typically, the only time we, the planning board sets hours are uses in residential neighborhoods, like funeral parlor is where they might affect it, and commercial districts. As far as I know, the hours are about, something about lights. Lights have to turn off at midnight.
So if I wanted to have a 12 midnight funeral, I have to cancel those plans, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
If the ordinance is silent on hours of operation, the planning board can still set rules regarding light and so on in the site plan approval, is that correct?
That's correct.
Can I follow up on that question? Sorry, it's a follow-up to this.
Sure, Counsel Murphy's been waiting.
Does that then mean that they can then set hours?
Yes.
Okay.
Counsel Murphy?
With all of our good intentions, the licensee could decide, "I'm going to be open from 10 to 5. Case closed." So...
Counsel Adams?
Also, if I... Well, I guess that confuses me because I think what you're saying then is, absent any reference to unlimited hours, then the planning board could impose hours of operation. And I'm concerned with that.
It's true for all the uses, so that's the standard generally. The burden's really to prove why they do it. They don't, they don't do it willy-nilly, it doesn't come up very often. Comes up most often for home occupations and most often for lights in parking lots that face residential properties.
And what was the reasoning for putting in the 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM initially?
Because typically, it would basically provide some safety for neighborhoods, for neighborhoods to give some assurance that you wouldn't have a position where the planning board would allow later hours.
I'm sorry, safety?
So absent that language...
No, I'm asking, why was the language inserted?
So there'd be some assurance for neighborhoods that if you live near a medical marijuana place, it would only be limited from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Oh.
They wouldn't worry about it being lower later on.
And they could, and they could again impose that...
They could impose.
They could impose that absent there being a reference in the legislation that says that the hour shall be unlimited. I would change...
Distribution of delivery, and delivery, yeah. Mary, I have a question that, does the language delivery, which is also included in this paragraph, have an effect on...
That was requested by the Director of Public Health from Northampton. She was concerned about people delivering marijuana either from a growing facility to a dispensary or from a dispensary to a home, and so we added it on her recommendation.
And the reason for her concern?
I think sending a message, I hate speaking for her, but I believe just sort of, the more, the more activity it is, the more it seems weird, you know, are we having marijuana vans driving around at 2 at night?
All right, well, the, right now, it's Counsel Adams and Counsel Freeman Daniels, All right, well, the, right now, it's Counsel Adams and Counsel Freeman Daniels, then Counsel Murphy, then Counsel LeBard, so Counsel Adams.
Just briefly, my point is that I think that my amendment's justified even more by the fact that other, that other limitations on hours of operation can be imposed, so there's really no need for us to do it, and a dispensary could willingly do it themselves.
Counsel Freeman Daniels.
Yeah, thank you. I, I support this amendment, and I, I do think that we should limit the, I think we should simply strike 4A and not replace it with any further law, because of the oversight and the, and the much more thorough site plan approval process that takes place, may find that for reasons having nothing to do with marijuana, a 24-hour bill, a 24-hour business may be detrimental to a neighborhood. And so I think that the planning board would have, would have good, could have good reasons for restricting hours of operation, for reasons, again, having nothing to do with marijuana, or these particular facilities or, or, or businesses. So I support striking this, but, but, but going no further than that, and understanding that there is a possibility that hours might be limited due to site plan approval. Thank you.
Just a point of information, you're saying a friendly amendment to strike, but you're saying we should strike.
I think the amendment is to strike 4A.
It is to strike, sorry.
And I will support that.
Counsel Murphy?
Well, I think deliveries are important. I mean, you know, a guy in brown shorts isn't going to be showing up with a box and walking in the front door, just that they're getting delivered 500 pounds of a controlled substance. Somebody's going to take some interest in that, it's going to have some level of security, you know? I'm sure the police department might kind of like to know when, when the shipping and receiving is going to be running, and that there's some security interest there, you know? Certainly, you might like to have deliveries during regular business hours or something of that nature. Deliveries is an important, I think an important thing to me, customers is one thing, but large quantities coming and going off a loading dock, or however it gets done, would seem to me to, to be a sensitive time in the operation of one of these facilities that would probably want to have more security than when it's locked down and running the way it normally does.
Counsel LeBard, did you have a question on this? Okay, so question.
And it's on the orders, again, Wayne, could you just please?
Counsel, we'll get to that, that, we're actually speaking on the amendment that is not included in the orders at this point, so we'll get to that. We're getting there. It's a slow slog. The sausage, as Counsel Tacey refers to, is laboriously being made. Counsel Adams, you wanted to amplify on your point, and then?
If there's no limitation on deliveries of other substances like opiates and amphetamines, there should be no limit on deliveries on this substance. When the voters voted to pass the decriminalization law, the voters decided that a small amount of marijuana, under an ounce, would be a civil infraction. If you have a small amount of, if you have one amphetamine pill, then you have no prescription, or if you have one opiate pill and you have no prescription, they're misdemeanor crimes. So those are treated more seriously than marijuana, and in that way, in a sense, they're even more illegal. I think it's more of a stigma to have a misdemeanor charge and to have a fine that you're issued. So when it comes to marijuana as medicine, there's no reason to treat it differently than medicines that are found in pharmacies, which are often highly more addictive and highly more dangerous and highly more detrimental and actually kill people when misused. So again, I respectfully disagree with putting any limitation on delivery. It makes no sense. This is not for, this is not for recreational use. Let's get past that. This is now medicine we're talking about. Thank you.
Counsel Tacey, you had your hand up. Oh, and actually, I'm sorry, Counsel Freeman Daniels did have his hand up and waiting, then Counsel Tacey, anyone else on the side, and other than that, Counsel LeBard? Okay.
I, I'm, I feel strongly about both. I don't disagree with Counsel Murphy about how delivery might be a sensitive topic and a, and an important time to be on extra alert, but I don't think that it necessarily means eight and eight. It might be possible to make an arrangement that is earlier or later, or based on the vagaries of shipment to be varied. I don't think it's, it would be difficult to coordinate with the police if that was necessary, and I think it's, I think by removing this restriction, we let the business manage their own inventory, and I think we should, we should allow that to happen. So again, I still support this.
Counsel Tacey?
I was, I touched on that before about the inventory, the amount of the inventory they would keep in security and things such as that, delivery, I didn't try not to bring it up, but I know that some of these pharmacies, when they have opiates things delivered, they come in sometimes with a woman with an old bag, and so if not to arouse suspicion, I've seen that, too. It's tactics been used everywhere. So anyway, I don't know. I have to agree with, the delivery, I think is, should be some kind of controlled somehow, or at least, at least notify the police, or something.
Just a point of order.
I'll let it go.
I just don't understand how this relates to the, is that actually an expression against the amendment? I'm not sure how that, or is it a change?
I'm saying unlimited hours of operation.
Oh, okay.
Unlimited hours of deliveries.
I understand, so.
My point was, too, that somebody said deliveries weren't all that relevant, and to me, they are, because this substance tends to have more bulk, and therefore.
Got it.
Counsel LeBard, did you have a, Counsel Freeman?
Quite, just a interrogative. I wonder if the, if Counsel Murphy would agree that the planning board, through the site plan approval, might, might set delivery hours more appropriately than we can using this blanket language.
Questions directed to you, you're welcome to answer. Or not. You don't have to. Things that are in ordinances tend to happen that way. You know, the planning board. I love them, but sometimes I agree with them and sometimes I don't. If it's in an ordinance, it stays that way.
Until we change it.
Until we temporarily.
Call the question.
The questions, all those in favor calling the question?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Roll call, please, Mary. We're voting on the amendment to strike.
Hours.
Its entirety, 4A, which reads, "Hours of operation for any sale to the public in distribution and delivery of marijuana shall be limited from, limited to 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m." Motion is to strike.
Yes.
No.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spack?
Yes.
Counsel Fagan?
No.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBard?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
He said aye. He said aye.
He's a pirate.
He said, no.
You really do want to put those guys at Pulaski Park out of business.
All right, the motion carries, the amendment stands. So that is struck. Back to the question. Any further discussion on the question? Counsel Freeman Daniels?
I have no further amendments to offer.
Okay. Counsel LeBard. Mary thanks you.
I'd like to refer as one.
He's still recognized.
Okay. I just want an explanation, please, about the odors from marijuana. I mean, if it's being delivered, it's not a factory. I'm just concerned, because of all the difficulties I had on my ward with odors, what is this all about?
This is an abundance of caution. I believe the state regulations, regulations anyway, but remember, marijuana, you're not allowed to subcontract your work out, so if, for example, instead of selling this as a broken-up leaf, you're selling it in brownies, you might be cooking it, or you're selling it as lollipops, so there could be processing smells. So this wouldn't be from a dispensary, if you're making this as well. We allow not only dispensaries, but we allow growing facilities and treatment facilities, and so we're just saying, we don't think it's going to happen, but we want to make sure you have proper filtering, so that our building inspector could enforce, if there were odors that were getting out of this.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to know, if it was state regulation here. Thank you.
I should point out, there are some businesses who have mock fragrances that smell much like marijuana that intentionally broadcast it onto the streets, and they, with, with, I would presume, not the noblest of reasons. Any other questions?
It's called a question.
The question's being called, this is on the, all right.
Actually, can I say one thing?
Sure.
Yeah, yes. Could we, could we just have, for the public's benefit, and to say on the record why we're being asked to vote on two readings for this tonight?
So.
Yes, go right ahead, please.
So because the state licenses are new, before you'd have a chance for second, the application for next license, applicants would likely say, yes, in part of their application to state, yes, we're in accordance with local regulations, because the next stage of the application is they have to be site-specific, they have to say, I'm applying, before it was, I'm applying for a dispensary in Hampshire County, they have to say now, I'm applying for a dispensary in Northampton at X address, and they'd like to be able to say, and that site complies with Northampton zoning, and we don't really know what Northampton zoning is as of today. If you pass this, then they can apply the adjournance for the permits.
On first reading, I'm going to ask to call the question.
The, this is, the question's being called, all those in favor calling the question, please say aye. Oh, boy. Opposed? Any objections? Roll call, please.
So don't have a first and a second on this?
Way back. Way back. Counsel Freeman Daniels, this is the original motion to, and I'm trying to remember the second.
No, I also, I think, I think I made the motion, second part, but I'll make it again.
Oh, you can't, we've already had discussion.
I, I know that we have.
It was made and seconded.
Wait, before we start.
I think it was Counsel Freeman Daniels.
Counsel Freeman Daniels.
And Counsel Adams.
And Counsel Adams.
That does make sense. So if you could indicate that Counsel.
For posterity.
For posterity. When people start speaking of our forefathers, blah, 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 we don't know exactly who to refer to when they're 200 years from now. Counsel Murphy?
Counsel Murphy.
In the record book. All right. So roll call, please. We're now voting on the body of the question with the exception of one paragraph that's toward that.
And the, and the deletion of the hours.
As amended.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spack?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel LeBard?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Counsel LeBard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move second reading.
There's a, do you want, I need second motion to suspend rules.
Suspend rule.
Second. All those in favor of suspending rules, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Second reading.
Second.
Second reading is moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm not entirely comfortable with passing ordinance, zoning ordinance, especially on two readings on one night, but given that we had a lot of discussion and much of the opposition had an ample opportunity to ring in during subcommittee meetings, I think we can go ahead with this, but I wish that it weren't a regular practice.
I agree. Any other discussion on second reading? Roll call. Oh, Counsel Tacey.
For what it's worth, I'll vote no on the second reading, because I think there might be somebody in the public that might like to weigh in on this in between now and the time that, the next meeting.
Noted. Uh, roll call, please.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spack?
Yes.
Counsel Fagan?
No.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBard?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
All right, five-minute recess, please.
Five-minute recess has been requested. We will have five-minute recess, we'll reconvene in five minutes or so.
Let's not make the.
We're back, we're coming out of recess, and we're back to the business at hand. 11B2, for those who've been following, following along at home, 11B2, I'll accept the motion to put it on the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Counsel Freeman Daniels, you, would you discuss why you wanted to separate it?
Aye. Yeah, I see this as a separate, a separate bit of zoning to the marijuana ordinance. I see this as a, looks, looks to me as though it's a technical fix that the planning board is trying to, and Office of OPD is trying to put into the approval criteria for traffic mitigation. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, but I am, I am opposed to two votes tonight. This is regular zoning, this is not related, from what I can tell, to medical marijuana facilities, per se, and I also have a problem that I'd like to address between this, just a slight problem with how this process happened between this meeting and the next, so. I'm not against it, I just think that the councils should do the normal procedure, one vote today, one vote on November 21st.
Could, could we recognize Wayne Fiden on this? Just ask his.
Wayne's, Wayne is trapped in recognition.
So first of all, having a reading today and next one in the next meeting is just fine, there's no reason not to do that. So this comes, Counsel is right, this comes from a totally different source, this came from a U.S. Supreme Court decision. There's a link together when we took the medical marijuana language to Alan Seawell, the city solicitor, he was uncomfortable with us moving forward without addressing this potential deficiency from the Supreme Court case. That's why it's together, but the two weeks delay won't be an issue. So let me just give you some background for context, and then talk about this change. So we keep following this traffic mitigation, but as Counsel Murphy said, we don't require cash. We would actually prefer a developer make improvements. So many developers make improvements. Opal at Round Hill is making improvements, they're not giving us a penny of cash. Many developers make improvements. We give developers a choice to say you could voluntarily pay into this fund in lieu of making your own bricks and mortar improvements. And so some projects, it's difficult for them to make the improvements, and so they give us the cash for us to make them, and some projects are worried about liability, so they don't want to do it. So the development community is split. About half the time, they make improvements. Hill and Doll Mall is adding a signal, or at a pedestrian phase, the signal on King Street, it's their improvements, they won't give us cash. Walgreens gave us a bike path, which was worth about $90,000 and about $60,000 of cash, so we get a mix of those things. So the rules for last six or seven years we've had this have been, if you're proposing a project, first you look at what traffic mitigation you provide. If you don't want to do that, we have a formula that says, here's the dollar amount you can give us. The Supreme Court was saying, we need to have a clear, individualized, fact-based assessment on how much the mitigation for this project is worth. So, you know, is this project going to create $50,000 of damages or $100,000 of damages? And so, starting as of, you know, two months ago, when the Supreme Court ruled, if anything's come up, we will, we will be doing a fact-based assessment for doing it. As a practical matter, it's probably not going to make any difference, because in the past, we gave a formula, we said, here's the dollar amount. Now we say that's a cap. We can't charge more than that, and that's to provide the development community with some assurance. Planning board's not going to do an assessment, say, oh, it's $10 million. So the numbers are there to give them assurance, because you can, developers, if you're buying a piece of property, making an offer on the land, you'd like to know what's the worst-case assessment. So giving them that worst-case is important. We're still to do a fact-based assessment. As a practical matter, our fees are low enough that I would believe in most cases, the minimum is also going to be the maximum, that we're doing assessment, we find that their impacts are more, but we're, each time, we do differently, we look at that. We just, I just wrote Piner Valley Planning Commission today to see if they can give us any help thinking about that methodology. We have to think about exactly how do we do this, because one of the reasons the development community actually liked the formula is under the old system, before city council changed the rules, we required a traffic study for every project to figure out what the dollar amount was. The problem for a developer is you're paying $5,000 or $10,000 for a traffic study, and then you're giving us the dollar amount. So developers actually liked the formula, but the Supreme Court said we can't do it that way. So, we're being, this brings us into compliance with the Supreme Court. The reason, the time is not, we said it's critical we do this, but the reason the time isn't critical is as a practical matter, if somebody applies tomorrow, we will do a fact-based assessment and we can't charge them, because the Supreme Court has told us that, we can't charge them more than the impacts are. We just like to correct the zoning so it's truth in advertising.
And it also would not have an effect, impact, one way or the other, as far as DPH is concerned in their review of licensure. Any other questions?
My only request is, I probably won't be here two weeks from tonight, so if there's questions you have between now and then, let me know.
Alright. It's starting to look like no one's going to be here. I mean, it's going to be worried. Council Freeman Daniels.
The only other thing I want to make sure is taken care of before November 21st is that the code is updated. It's just a technical matter, but the council passed an amendment to this code on December 20th, 2012, and that was not included in this new package. And went through planning board and ordinance, and it was, you know, omitted a sentence that the council had added almost a year ago. So, I don't know if that matters, but-
If we're making law, we better make the right law.
Right, so assuming that we can, assuming that the council understands that this, that what they read here on this page is actually not the law, that it's one sentence short of the law, then I think we're alright then.
Do you have that sentence handy?
Yeah, I do. I was particularly proud of it since I proposed it and it actually passed, and that was that-
Yeah, I can understand you're interested in seeing it through the-
Yeah, was it, "All in lieu of payment," you might remember this from last year, "All in lieu of payments will be expended with the approval of the mayor and city council only after first being introduced for recommendation to the Transportation Parking Commission, consistent with planning board conditions." Then there's the sentence that's being struck, which is the generally very large master plan project. So that sentence wasn't included in the, in this change to be amended. I don't think they're anyone's fault. I think it just got omitted by the, when the updates were happening or something like that.
If you would be so kind as to forward that to the secretary so that that can be included for the second reading.
That's fine.
Presuming the second reading will come in the next council meeting.
It makes sense to have from a truth in advertising standpoint, because the language clearly says, the only change we're making is what the addition is. I don't think it has a legal effectiveness, but in terms of it all being one place, it's a good idea to-
Right. Noted. Any other questions? No? All the questions? Uh, roll call, please.
Council Spector?
Yes.
Council Tracy?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Boyd?
Yes.
Council Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Council LeBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Schwartz?
Yes.
You all cast your mind back.
Before we move on, I'm sensitive to Council Freeman Daniels' concerns, but given the body count at our next meeting, we will, we still need a supermajority, and if one of the remaining councillors should step in front of a bus, we're going to be short.
If that's the case, then we would postpone the vote.
Yeah, we could. Okay. Just-
It seems like there's a rush on the-
And here's hoping no councillors get hit by a bus.
Well, it's not my desire that that happened, but-
Sniffle or something along that line.
I would hope you would-
Let's move along here.
Okay, so you all, you guys all remember, like, I don't know, it was like hours ago, I read a resolution relative to this issue. Do you want me to read it again?
Please dispense with the reading.
The reading is dispensed. Is, I'll accept the motion to put it back on the floor?
I move second.
Just for folks at home, this is the resolution from the mayor and myself, essentially expressing the fact that we, as a community, are amenable and prepared to accept the establishment of medical marijuana dispensaries here in the city of Northampton. Any discussion? Oh, come on. We need, come on, everyone's getting-
Call the question, please.
We've got a whole lot of ways to go here. Everyone's going to look a lot peppier. Come on. Alright, Council Freeman Daniels.
Under the paragraph, under paragraph seven, we did strike hours of operation from the ordinance.
Do you want to amend that?
No, actually I don't. I'm just calling it to everyone's attention. This is for site plan, so the planning board can still set some hours of operation under site plan. So this is still acceptable, even though we, the council eliminated hours of operation requirements, and I support this as written.
Good point, okay. Any other questions on the resolution? There is a request for two readings for the reasons that were stated before. This would need to be included in the application packages. I think 17th or the 21st is when it's due, so. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution passes. I'll accept the suspension of rules.
So moved.
Suspend two readings, roll.
Motion's made to suspend rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll accept the motion and put it on the floor a second time.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries. Lockdown. Ready to go. It will be available to the applicants to forward in their application in a timely fashion, so. Thank you all very much. Now, how about those minutes?
So moved. Approval of minutes on the 13th. October's-
Okay, let Mary catch up here.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think anyone made that motion.
Yeah, somebody did.
Uh, my bad.
Somebody did.
So, who made the second? Who motioned it the second time? So, these two? Can we just do that?
Who made the motions?
I mean, it was-
I did either the motion or the second on both.
Council Spector made the motion. Council LeBarge seconded it.
We can go back and watch the-
It's a- Okay, now we're back to the minutes. I'll accept the motion. The motions been made. Move to approve. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Minutes have passed. Where are we?
Reports of committees.
Reports of committees. There's the minutes from SSVA, I mean, Social Services and Veterans Affairs minutes. There'll be also the Public Safety minutes of October 7th, 2013. Committee on Rules, Ordinances and Orders, minutes of October 7th, 2013.
Can we take those as a group?
Second. Okay, so they've been moved as a group. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we're up to a new appointment to the planning board of Dan Felton.
So moved.
Recommend, recommend.
Move to recommend. To recommend to the Committee on Appointments.
No, no, he already-
Yeah, it's recommend not to refer. Or appoint.
Alright. This is upon the recommendation of that committee, okay.
On the recommendation.
Just on Dan Felton. So the motion is to approve Dan Felton, and there is a second?
Did you, did you interview this? Yes. So, we met with Dan Felton on Monday. We interviewed him. You can, he's a great candidate. He was actually a very important person on the Stormwater Task Force and showed both a skill in terms of facilitation and quite a bit of knowledge and a willingness to research issues and to work really hard. I think this is going to be a, he's, it's just an associate member right now. I think he's going to be a great addition to the planning board. We did interview him. And we unanimously voted for his positive recommendation to the whole council.
I just have a question. Is his name spelled correctly here on this?
Felton.
T-E-N?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Good job, Mary.
L-T-E-N.
Alright. Any further questions, discussion on this appointment? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you very much. Then we have, let's see. Hey, look, it's time for finance. We'll go into recess and convene in Finance Committee chaired by Councillor David Muntz.
Council Murphy?
Here.
Council Boyd?
Here.
Council LeBarge?
Present.
Here.
Excellent. And our first order of business tonight is the tax rate, which we tried to do earlier, but it needs to come out of finance first. So, upon the recommendation of Mayor David Darkwitz, order that the Northampton City Council approves for fiscal year 2014 a residential factor of one.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Okay. We talked about this at length. Any more discussion here? All in favor of a positive recommendation?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. None opposed? Good. Number one. Now, the, this next issue gets a little bit confusing, and the mayor's going to talk to about this, but essentially what we're doing is rescinding a TIF and giving a grant directly from CPC. So, before I read this, it probably makes more sense to have the mayor give us an overall description of what's going on here so that no one gets confused. Is everyone alright with that?
I think everyone's already confused, so it's fine.
So, so this concerns the, sort of the two-pronged award that the council voted in support of the Christopher Heights Assisted Living Facility at Village Hill. And at the request of the project developer, we sort of put forward a somewhat unorthodox approach, which was to combine a $120,000 grant from the CPC of CPA funds that came to the city to offset a TIF, which the city council, a tax increment financing agreement, which the city council also voted on. And I know that this, ironically, this was a very confusing and unorthodox, and at nearly every committee level, folks said, you know, why not just give the money directly to the project developer? But again, the developer, this is the preferred route that they had requested, so we were trying to accommodate him. So, fast forward, they're going through their process for low-income tax credits for the project, and now the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development has flagged this as an issue, and they would prefer that instead of this arrangement, that the grant go directly to the project. So, the Community Preservation Committee, I brought it back to them. They've agreed to essentially rescind their previous order and have put forward now to you just a clean award of $120,000 directly to the Grantham Group. Again, to remind you, half of the units at this project are affordable assisted living. So that's the rationale why these qualify for CPA funding. And so, the TIF goes away. That piece of it, we will not proceed with because the TIF was dependent on the award of the funding to the city. So that piece doesn't require a revote, but we need a revote of the CPA award. So that's why these two orders are before you. One to rescind what you did before, and then a second one to kind of, to put forward a new order. Same $120,000, not a different $120,000, but the same, just a different wording.
So has everybody got that? So now I'll read them. Just if I read the, I was afraid if I read the order, it would be a little too confusing. So, upon the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, order that the order passed on March 7th is hereby rescinded. And the order was that whereas the city of Northampton and the Grantham Group submit an application for Community Preservation Act funding for the Christopher Heights Affordable Assisted Living Project, and whereas the project will provide 43 units of affordable assisted living in a new 83-unit assisted living residence at Village Hill with affordability restrictions to be held by the city of Northampton and the Department of Housing and Community Development, and whereas affordable assisted living is a housing type that is in demand locally and regionally, and whereas the master plan for redevelopment of the former state hospital includes assisted living, and whereas the Grantham Group has an excellent record of creating affordable assisted living in Massachusetts, and whereas on January 2nd, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted 5 to 1 to recommend $120,000 in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support the project. Now therefore be ordered that $120,000 be appropriated from Community Preservation Act funding to the city of Northampton for the Christopher Heights Assisted Living Affordable Project for creation of 43 affordable housing units, and that the grantee meet the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, the city council, and the CPC funds will be used to capitalize a portion of a 15-year TIF abatement project for the project. Specifically, the $120,000 is appropriated from the Affordable Housing Reserve account. So we're going, that's, we're rescinding that one.
And does it make sense to mention what we're replacing it with? It's essentially after now therefore.
Yeah, yeah.
Be it ordered.
Yeah.
So-
So, can we get a motion to recommend?
I'll make a motion to recommend.
In the second?
Yes, second.
Okay. Then what I'll do, when we, once we voted on this one, I'll do the new CPC funding them directly.
Also, to councillor, I think they're going to be asking for two readings on-
On the, I think on the second one.
City council, yeah.
Yes, in city council, yes, I'll do this. Okay. Not here. So, all in favor of rescinding, recommending rescinding this one, say aye.
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 Aye? No one opposed?
Yep, we're all set.
We're good. Okay. Now, this is the, this is where the money's coming back. Upon the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee-
Actually, I think all the language is the same right up to the-
The very, you want me to just read the very end?
Yes.
Okay. Now therefore be it ordered, that $120,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Grantham Group for Christopher Heights Assisted Living Affordable Housing Project for creation of 43 affordable assisted living units, and that the grantee meets the condition approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and the council, and the $120,000 is appropriated from the CPA Affordable Housing Reserve account. Otherwise, it's the same.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
What happened to the TIF? Is that, is the city offering?
TIF went away.
No TIF.
Gone.
They just get the $120,000 direct.
Yep. Before, it was the convoluted gauntlet that it had to go through.
Yeah.
But in my recollection, I could be wrong, because I've heard a lot, but my recollection is that the CPA was only offering a portion of the TIF.
That's correct. And I actually, when I went back to the CPA to seek this amended order, I did in fact ask them if they would be willing to increase the CPA award. They're not. Well, they, it wasn't that they weren't, they wanted, they felt that that change would require coming back in for another application. They didn't want to just end up the figure. They felt that that needed to be a new application. So basically, the way we had it structured was 100, it was a 25% TIF. $120,000 of it represents 20% of the 25%, and then the remaining 5%, which is, again, we're just using rough numbers, about 30,000, was the 5% portion. So, the net result of what we're doing is, means that we're lowering the city's support for the project because we're not giving them any TIF. But, so I did ask them if they would be amenable to that, and so we still, the project applicant, still go back to them to make a second application, but you're correct, councillor. So no TIF? That's right. The TIF was contingent on the award of the CPA money, so- Going to the city rather than directly, so because it's- So I will not be moving forward and executing any TIF agreement with them. Thank you. So.
They get the TIF, we get the cash.
Yeah. But now, yeah, so. We get the TIF. They get the cash. Other way around.
The other way around now. They get the-
Right. Just a question relative to the TIF. In the absence of the TIF, does that change the disposition of their application and to proceed?
No. Again, I think that, I think that this was always, I think that their, at this point, their biggest concern is trying to meet the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development's criteria, so they understand.
Okay.
The difficulty is, in all the other communities, this is like their fifth of these Christopher Heights. TIFs had always been sort of part of their business model, and so this was sort of the way that they had done it, and so-
I remember that presentation very well.
Yeah, and so we were probably one of the first communities that actually put CPA money into it. And in fact, the one no vote on the CPC committee was that they loved the project, they just, they couldn't understand why they wouldn't just take the money, put it in the bank, and take out a little bit every year, you know, exactly.
I recall that.
Exactly, so.
Freeman Daniels said something very similar.
Right. So, I'm actually very gratified by this because it takes the city off the hook over the long term, so I'm very-
I suggest that I'm concerned that we didn't, I didn't want the developers to think we set them up in a bait and switch.
Not, no, not in the least, and believe me, no, not in the least. I won't go into it.
I just don't want, I don't want to get a-
No, and actually, there's a letter in the record from Mr. Ohanian asking me to do this, requesting that I do this. So we have a letter from him requesting this change.
Thank you.
That letter didn't get in the packet, did it?
I think it may have gone to the CPC, so it may have been in that application, but maybe it didn't come to you. But that was the basis for which they agreed to make the change, but we can get you a copy of it.
So I should give this back to Mary. We're going to vote? All in favor, opposed, or-
Aye.
All in favor, a positive recommendation?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Good.
Give the original?
Let's steal the other one, too.
There you go.
Do I have to give back the old ones before I get the new ones?
That's right. It's the way it works.
All right. So the next is budgetary transfer. "Upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narkowitz, order that the following FY 2014 budgetary transfers hereby be made. The Board of Health is getting some permanent salaries, or it's going from Board of Health permanent salaries and salary reserve for wage increases to contract inspection services, and this is for an arrangement to share the sanitarium with AMERST. I don't know if you want to speak to this one, too, but essentially, we're, we share a sanitarium, and this pays what our share..."
I'll move to recommend first, and then...
I'll second it.
You may remember recently, Meredith, City's health director, Meredith O'Leary, came before you, because we, the previous agreement with AMERST was that we shared a nurse and a sanitarium, and the financial arrangement was, we paid for the nurse and benefits, they paid for the sanitarium and benefits. AMERST decided to amend that agreement, and no longer share a public health nurse. So now, we're left with just sharing the sanitarium, and so, we're now moving this, the portion of those funds to contract services, because we are now contracting with AMERST essentially for those services. The deal before was just two full-time employees, you pay for the salary benefits of that one, we'll pay for the salary benefits of that one, and that was how we did it before. Now, since we're just sharing one employee, we are actually paying them part of the salary and benefits, so...
And didn't they actually steal the nurse?
I'm not going to...
You're not going to comment on that one, okay?
They did end up hiring Nurse Adams, who's now going to become their full-time nurse. So, yes. I've given...
That will go down with my bus analogy as inappropriate.
... sufficient grief about that, so...
So, any more questions about this one? All in favor of a positive?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. And this is upon the recommendation, again, of Mayor David Narkowitz, order that $4,721.60, the balance remaining from a January 3, 2013 appropriation for the replacement of pistols for the Police Department, is no longer needed for that purpose, and the remaining funds be reprogrammed to supplement the June 27, 2013 appropriation for tactical equipment for the Police Department.
Move to approve.
Second it.
Okay. Any questions for the mayor on this one? Pretty straightforward. Right. Oh, Councilor Adams?
So it's no longer needed for guns?
Yeah, you may have, you may remember that we, we had a, we put forward a couple of different capital improvement projects, and initially, we were going to actually send all the pistols in and have them re-sighted and all sorts of other maintenance work on it, and then it turned out that we were able to actually, for less, we were able to purchase all-new Glocks. And so, it ended up being more cost-effective to do that. And so, there was actually some excess money now left over from that capital project, and so they are asking if we could program that remaining money and move it into this tactical project, to give them additional funds to purchase tactical...
And the tactical equipment is environmental stuff, as I recall. It's hazmat, it's hazmat stuff. It's not, you know, they're not buying a tank. It's protective gear that ages out over so many years, and we weren't able to fund all of it. So we replaced, we gave them money to start replacing it, and they just want to take this leftover money and add to that, you know, so it's for gas masks and protective gear for the officers if they get into a hazardous situation.
And this is, of course, funds that you've already appropriated, and it's just because we're changing the purpose of how you appropriated them, we have to come back to you and get your permission to repurpose it.
Any other questions on this one? All right. All in favor of a positive recommendation?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Any opposed? So we go to fire now. "Upon the recommendation of Mayor David Narkowitz, order that whereas the mayor's FY 14 capital plan approved by the City Council in June, provided the Northampton Fire Department with funding for new fire apparatus, which is scheduled to be delivered in November, very soon, it's a new engine, whereas the Fire Department has declared Engine 5 surplus and has competitively bid the disposal of the apparatus, and has awarded a bid to the most advantageous bidder, Brindle Mountain Fire Apparatus in Alabama, for $45,000, and whereas the funds from the sale of the surplus apparatus are intended to be used to equip the new incoming apparatus, and whereas the new apparatus needs to be put into service before the surplus apparatus is released, and therefore, the funds need to be available in advance of the receipts from that sale, and whereas the funds received from the sale of the surplus apparatus will flow automatically into the general fund, and it's the mayor's intent to seek appropriation of that funds back to capital stabilization, now therefore be ordered that $44,975 be appropriated from capital stabilization for the purposes of equipping the new fire apparatus."
Second it.
Okay. Any questions for the mayor on this one?
I think the mayor put his memo into the preamble.
It sure looks like it, yeah.
I did, I tried to, because I, yeah. So, again, this is, we'd said from the start, when you approved this capital project, that we were going to sell that engine and get funding for it. We're just caught in this catch-22, where we need to stuff, and you've got a detailed list of all the things we have to buy to outfit the engine, but we can't actually, we can't spend the proceeds of the sale until we sell it, and we don't want to sell it till we get the new engine. So, so we're essentially going to take money out of capital stabilization to pay for these upgrades to this project, and then, when we do sell it, the money will flow into the general fund, and we'll put it back in capital stabilization. It's really just a timing issue, and that's why we need to do this.
And that way, we're not down an equipped engine at any point?
Exactly. Exactly. Yeah.
Any other questions on this one? Right, then, all in favor of a positive recommendation?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And if possible, I don't know if we made the request, but it would be helpful for two readings, because obviously, the engine's coming.
It is there.
Yeah, excellent.
Yeah, the council will be...
Good. And I don't believe there's anything else on our agenda, so a motion to adjourn finance.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Vote, go back into regular session. Thank you very much, Councilor Murphy.
What?
You'll remember this. "Upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narkowitz, the Northampton City Council approves for fiscal year 2014 residential factor of 1, and the enclosed..."
Move to approve.
Second it.
The motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the floor on this? A roll call, please.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Carney?
Yes.
Councilor Boyd?
Yes.
Councilor Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Councilor LeBarre?
Yes.
Councilor Herring?
Yes.
Councilor Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilor Specter?
Yep.
Yes.
Next up is the financial order, the rescission of order passed that we discussed. I'm assuming you're okay with me waiving reading?
I move two and three as a group.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Move to rescind.
Two and three?
I move two and three as a group.
Oh, two, which ones?
Two and three.
Two and three are being moved as a package, and that's seconded?
I know, you're doing two readings on this.
On both of them.
Yeah.
Is that the motion?
Yeah.
The motion is to move both as a package, it's been seconded. It's okay.
And waive reading of the other half.
And waive reading of the other half. Everyone's okay with the orders? Any further discussion on these two items? This is going to have a roll call.
Councilor Carney?
Yes.
Councilor Boyd?
Yes.
Councilor Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Councilor LeBarre?
Yes.
Councilor Murphy?
Yes.
Councilor Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilor Specter?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Carney?
Yes.
Councilor Boyd?
Move second reading.
Second it.
Second reading. Any further discussion? You ready to do a roll call? Okay.
Councilor Boyd?
Yes.
Councilor Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Councilor LeBarre?
Yes.
Councilor Murphy?
Yes.
Councilor Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilor Specter?
Yes.
Councilor Casey?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Carney?
Yes.
Councilor Boyd?
Yes.
Councilor LeBarre?
Yes.
Councilor Murphy?
Yes.
Councilor Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilor Specter?
Yes.
Councilor Casey?
Yes.
Councilor LeBarre?
Yes.
Councilor Carney?
Yes.
Councilor Boyd?
Yes.
Yes. Next up is the financial order to reprogram $4,721.60 for the replacement pistols to tactical equipment for the Police Department. I'll move to approve.
Second it.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mary.
Councilor LeBarre?
Yes.
Councilor Murphy?
Yes.
Councilor Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilor Specter?
Yes.
Councilor Casey?
Yes.
Councilor LeBarre?
Yes.
Councilor Carney?
Yes.
Councilor Boyd?
Yes.
Next up is the financial order to reprogram $4,721.60 for the replacement pistols to tactical equipment for the Police Department. I'll move to approve.
Second it.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mary.
Councilor LeBarre?
Yes.
Councilor Murphy?
Yes.
Councilor Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilor Specter?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Carney?
Yes.
Councilor Boyd?
Yes.
Councilor Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Councilor LeBarre?
Yes.
Councilor Murphy?
Yes.
Councilor Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilor Specter?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Carney?
Yes.
Councilor Boyd?
Yes.
Councilor Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Councilor LeBarre?
Yes.
Councilor Murphy?
Yes.
Councilor Casey?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Carney?
Yes.
Councilor Boyd?
Yes.
Councilor Murphy?
Yes.
Councilor Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilor Specter?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Carney?
Yes.
Councilor Boyd?
Yes.
Councilor Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Councilor LeBarre?
Yes.
Councilor Murphy?
Yes.
Councilor Murphy?
Yes.
Next up, and this is, it's a good thing the mayor's here, of course, this is, "In order to seek special legislation to allow the issuance of an annual all-alcoholic hotel license over quota to the Fair Filled Inn and Suites on Con Street," and this is the first reading. Do you want to hear all the language to it?
No.
No? Should I have asked?
This is an interesting, this is an interesting...
So would you like to read it?
It's interesting. You want to hear the...
It is interesting.
It is an interesting order.
"Just upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narkowitz in the Committee on Economic Development, Housing, and Land Use, and ordered that whereas the City of Northampton wishes to continue to encourage the growth and stability of the hospitality industry in Northampton, and whereas the construction of a new hotel on Con Street will add to the tax base, create jobs, bring additional revenue to Northampton businesses, and whereas the ability to operate a successful hotel requires the use of an annual all-alcoholic hotel license, and whereas the City of Northampton is over its quota for pouring licenses established in Section 17 of Chapter 138 of Massachusetts General Laws, and whereas special legislation is necessary to allow the City of Northampton to issue an over-quota annual all-alcohol hotel license to ensure economic vitality and stability in the City of Northampton. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor is authorized and directed to seek special legislation as follows: An act authorizing the City of Northampton to issue an above-quota annual all-alcoholic hotel license. And also be enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and the General Court assembled, and by the authority of the same as follows. Section 1, notwithstanding Section 17 of Chapter 138 of the General Laws, the licensing authority of the City of Northampton may issue one above-quota innkeeper license. This license shall be subject to all the provisions of said Chapter 138, except Section 17. The licensing authority shall not approve the change of location of the license. Failure to use and/or operate the license for six consecutive months, huh, may result in a License Commission hearing and the license reverting back to the city for reissuance." Yeah, it was very interesting. So, the motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay.
Motion to approve.
The motion's been made to approve and seconded.
Yes, I went before the Economic Development, Housing, and Land Use Committee a month or two ago, to seek their support and cosponsorship of this resolution. As you know, the owner of the Hotel Northampton, Mr. Gabeloff, is now undertaking to build a new hotel on Con Street, the Fair Filled Inn and Suites, which obviously, I'm very excited about and pleased about. It's going to be a great project for the city in terms of, again, part of that economic development that we heard about earlier, but also providing additional rooms for tourists, as well as not only property tax revenue, but additional hotel motel tax revenue. So, he has requested, one of the pieces that he'd like to have is the ability to serve alcohol at the hotel, as he does at the Hotel Northampton. Um, not, uh, he's not proposing a large, sort of, bar or restaurant, but more of a small, a smaller, um, uh, uh, bar area for travelers, um, who are staying at the hotel. So, because we are over quota, um, the route that we must take to, uh, seek approval of this is to seek special legislation. Um, you'll see that this is a very specific, uh, type of, uh, all-alcohol license, and that it's designated for hotel. We've also put in the, uh, another provision that it must stay with the actual hotel itself. So it's not a, a, uh, portable license, if you will, um, that can be sold to a different location. It has to stay with the location, um, except if the, as it says in the, um, you know, in the resolution itself, that if the license, uh, were to be pulled completely from that location, uh, we wouldn't lose it, we'd be able to still keep it within the city. So, so that's what's before you, and, um, I don't have any, uh, sense of what, whether or not, uh, this will pass the legislature. We did send it to the Board of Health, for their, uh, Board of Health, the License Commission, uh, for their review, um, and, uh, and I believe they discussed it. I don't think that they take a vote on these types of things. Uh, and actually, we have the License Commission clerk, so I, I don't know if you'd like to just characterize what their report was.
The License Commission was asked to discuss it, they do not take a vote, so as to not show any prejudice towards any particular applicant.
Okay. Um, I, uh, question about the, it's interesting because, uh, many purveyors who do have liquor licenses consider their liquor license an asset for resale. It's, it's, it's valued as an asset. Um, we're, we're, we actually have the means to request that it not serve as an asset, that it can't be transferable, um, to, to be sold for another enterprise, should, should that close? We actually have that?
Well, this is special legislation, so this is a license that would be created by special legislation. So interestingly, um, I know there've been, um, two other licenses in the news, uh, that you've been hearing about, perhaps.
I'm sure you're right, I don't know.
Um, and, uh, and one of those licenses at issue was actually created by special legislation. Um, and so for that reason, um, if one of those licenses, uh, were to be taken away from that particular person, one of those licenses would actually stay within the city. Uh, we wouldn't lose it. Um, the other one would go away.
And who, and, uh, if that license expires or is removed from the owner? We have the authority to grant it to someone else?
It, it's just that it stays within our, I mean, we haven't been in this position for a long time, because, well, because we're over quota. I mean, I have to say, just as a, as a baseline here, I don't support the state's laws regarding quotas and, and their quota system.
There's not going to get a big fight from the council.
It's an antiquated system, it's, uh, and it's, uh, it really makes no sense. I think that it's, I'm fine with them regulating and, and all that, but in terms of telling a community how many, um, licenses it wants to issue, I think that's a local decision. So, get off my soapbox there, but, uh, yeah, so I, I don't know, um, we haven't been in a position where we've had under, we've been under our quota, but if someone were to turn in a license, say, they, if they wanted to surrender a license, um, and it was not over quota, we'd have the ability to reissue it to someone else. Mary, correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct.
Yeah.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Just a question about, um, efficacy. Is it, do you believe that, uh, that final sentence should be in there, or do you think we should give you the authority to drop it? Failure to use and or operate may result in the License Commission hearing and license reverting back to the city for reissuance. I mean, would the general court and senate, um, be more likely to give Northampton this, uh, license if it weren't to revert back to the city?
No, I think that's just a clause, and I think we've used that in all of our special legislation. I think that's just designed so that if some reason, for some reason, the project fell through, or the developer, um, let's say he worked on it for many, many years and never actually finished it, I'm just saying this hypothetically, they wouldn't just get to keep it in their, um, back pocket, so to speak, uh, to use the phrase. So that's sort of what it's about. So I think this is actually kind of boilerplate that we've used in all the other ones that we've had. I don't, I don't think that this will predispose it any differently for the legislature, but.
Okay. You all done?
I, I mean, sure.
Counsel Murphy?
And this is tied to hotel.
Exactly.
You have to be an innkeeper.
That's correct.
So this is the sort of thing that?
Yeah, exactly.
You can sell to Bob's Bar and Grill, I mean, you got to have a hotel to use this one.
That's correct. So we.
A little less portable.
Exactly. So it would be, um, I mean, our hope is that there's a, going to be a hotel there for a long, long time to come. It's just that if, if, um, Mister, we don't want Mr. Galaboff to sell the hotel and take the license with him and leave the next hotelier with no license. So, that's why we want it to stay with the property. And it also, I think, distinguishes it for other, to other license holders in the community, that this is different in some respects than their license, for the concerns that you raised about, um, people who paid for licenses, et cetera, so.
Counsel Tacey and Counsel LeBarre?
I still don't want to characterize it as a non-asset. It is an asset. It's definitely an asset.
Most definitely.
Yeah.
Most definitely. Counsel LeBarre?
How long does it take, mayor, to get approval from the state legislature?
You know, I, I couldn't begin to, I, I can't tell you, I, I don't know. I mean, they'll, they're kind of, um, in short of, I wouldn't say a break right now, but they sort of will gear back up again after the first year. I mean, they're, they're in session, but I, I don't know how long it will take for this type of a, um, of an act. I mean, obviously, we're going to give it to Representative Kokod and, and give it to, um, Senator Rosenberg. I've already talked to them about it, so they know that it's happening. I just don't know. I mean, the charter thing, you know, don't.
They'll work on it after the bottle bill.
Exactly, yeah. I, I don't know, um, I couldn't tell you. We're obviously going to, I think that Mr. Galaboff would like to have it happen, and, and so, um, he may do his own independent lobbying for it, but.
I think that's critical. I, I agree with this. It's business. I think it helps us with the tax base, it also gives people jobs. So, I'm hoping that they do move on it.
Any further discussion? Um, roll call, please.
It's an order.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Casey?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Counsel LeBarre?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, this is a permit required for structures on street sidewalks and public art. This is the first reading. This is upon the recommendation of Counsel Jesse M. Adams, in ordinance of the city of Northampton, Massachusetts, providing the code ordinance of the city of Northampton, Massachusetts be amended by revising Section tw- 285-9 of said code, providing that permit required for structures on streets and sidewalks. Be it ordained by the council of the city of Northampton. Do I have to call for order?
She needs to share the joke. She needs to share that joke. We do that to her.
Accidentally woke your last review.
Oh, that's good. That's really good.
By the way, uh, when I finish this, you'll note the time in that we will have to call for extending. We'll see how that pans out. Be it ordained by the city council, the city of Northampton, the city council assembled as follows, the Section 28, uh, 285-9 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Northampton, Massachusetts, to be amended, so that such section shall read as follows. Permit required for structures in streets and sidewalks. Um, do you, do you want me to read the whole thing, or just the new language? Just the new language. Anything within a sidewalk, street, or on a public building, accepting property under the jurisdiction of the school committee that is considered public art by the arts council and is reasonably expected to last longer than 90 days, shall not be installed without a permit from the arts council. Public art may include, but is not limited to, murals, sculptures, and art installations. That's the motion, is someone put it on the floor?
Move to approve. Second. It's your, it's, it's your ordinance, Counsel.
Got to hang in.
Hang in there.
We're going to make it.
I'll make this brief.
Please vote for it.
The, the purpose of this is to, is to, um, if there, if there's art and it's on a public way, and it's going to be permanent, unlike chalk art, for example, in the Chalk Art Festival, it has to go through the arts council, so they can get the opportunity to weigh in and give it a permit. Um, it's, the purpose is to encourage more public art projects, and it's to let the arts council review, view, and give their approval of public art before it's installed. I've spoken with Arts Council Director Brian Foote, and I've offered to help them work on a permitting process. This went to, um, it did go to the Board of Public, it, it went to the Arts Council, and it got, it got a unanimous vote of support. It also went to the BPW, and it got to, uh, received a positive recommendation. I don't know what the vote was, but I do know it received a positive recommendation, and now it's before us. That's it.
Any other questions, discussion? Counsel Freeman Daniels?
I think this is long overdue.
Any other? I've always had a philosophical problem with, as to who are the arbiters of what is public art and what is art, and it's always given me pause, and the more we regulate art, the more I think we take, in some level, the artistic nature of it away in some, in some aspect. So, it, the, the civil libertarian in me makes me a, a little resistant. I'm amenable to this, because I, I, I have also spoken to, well, actually, I don't want to say that I'm amenable to it yet, but I have spoken with, with members of the arts council about this, and I understand what actually, where it came from, and it was generated by concern of the fact to, to mitigate, um, essentially, commercial management and, and city management of our projects, and it came out of something specifically like that. The, the, my only, as I said, my personal resistance is when we grant authorities, grant it to artists, but there, uh, there could be an aesthetic clash that actually, I believe, could have an inspirational value uh, in a certain installation that someone's prepared to put, and that the Arts Council may have, depending who's, it's made up of, may reject it based on aesthetic values that they have. We will be deprived of that. Sure, please, that's more like an open question, so.
Well, but when they create their process, they can also create their, their standards, and so they're, they're not really judges of, of, um, of, of, you know, and they're, and they're not there to say, I don't like it, so it doesn't go up, but, um, just to create general criteria that's going to ensure that it's, um, it's of a, a minimum quality. So, um, I think that they, it is the arts council, and I think that we can entrust them to, to, um, make the determination as to what is, at least, a, a, at minimum, a piece that should be on public property.
Freeman Daniels and Counsel Murphy?
I, uh, I understand your, um, your philosophical question here. I think it was, like, Counsel Murphy cracked me up tremendously when, uh, when, um, during, during discussion at subcommittee, the solicitor rang in on this issue, and the solicitor said that, uh, what would be helpful in this, uh, in this ordinance would be to, to add the definition of art. Counsel, Counsel Murphy said.
That's huge.
Counsel Murphy said, well, we might as well put in the meaning of life while we're at it. It was actually very funny. Uh, so, but, but the, the issue here, um, first of all, I, I think that practically speaking, although I don't often speak this way, but practically speaking, the arts council has not been afraid to, uh, make unpopular decisions regarding, uh, juried art, um, projects. And, um, and so I, I think that, uh, you can, you can trust the, the judgment of, of the arts council over, um, the judgment of, of, of individuals who, uh, at this point, have the ability to install permanent, until, unless we pass this, um, have the ability to install permanent art in the city, which will be viewed for generations, or conceivably could be, uh, without any scrutiny from any outside, from any artistic body. Uh, so I think this is a step in the, uh, in the right direction, because it, uh, creates a process, a public process, a process that's, um, conducted by a, uh, publicly-appointed body that holds public meetings, instead of allowing the creation and installation of art by, um, essentially by fiat. And, uh, I, I think that the Counselor Adams wrote this, um, very appropriately to apply to permanent structures, not things that aren't only going to be there for a short period of time. And that is a, uh, I think it's a key distinction, because, uh, as a community, we can definitely have very salubrious and interesting conversations around, um, disruptive, or, or challenging, or, or provoking artwork, but you don't always want to have it be permanent, and, uh, you want to have, at least to be, at least have some, uh, some process, uh, public process associated with the, the public use of a space.
Counsel Murphy and Counsel Carney?
Just a question then.
Sure.
These are, so how does this relate to sandwich boards and those sorts of?
Um, in the, in the regulations, we discussed that, in the regulations, they're going to exclude that sort of thing. Hopefully, they haven't written them yet, but we discussed that, and the, the idea is to exclude sandwich boards for another similar, thanks.
I'm thinking of anything else that, um, a business might put up, um, besides sandwich boards. They wouldn't necessarily have to, um, have scrutiny of the.
I don't know, I don't think sandwich boards are permanent anyhow, but.
No, but they could be more than 90 days. Right? I mean, if you put it up in April and take it down in November.
They, they can just judge it. It's not art.
Okay.
It's not art, it's advertising.
That's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm suggesting.
I'm sorry, who could say it's not art?
The way they write up.
When they create their permitting process, they could, they just exclude sandwich boards, for example.
But the, okay, but they haven't done that yet, this is.
Well, they wouldn't, until after this is passed, if it's passed.
And I would also have them talk to planning, because there's art and there's signs, and signs are already regulated, and I know in the past, there's been some discussion, is it a sign or is it art?
Right, but the content is not really regulated.
But this ordinance could prevent that.
Yeah. We just want, when they write their ordinance, they want to figure out what's already defined as a sign, so that we keep the art and the signs separate. But one of the things, Counsel Casey, I think, remember the Go West sign in Florence, there was an argument, is it a sign or is it art? And they decided it was a sign when West was in the building, but once West left the building, it was.
It was, it was art.
It wasn't a sign anymore, because West was gone, so, just, just, to think about that. I, I have to say that, um, I am not comforted.
Yeah.
And, and, and I think, on one level, I understand that public art done with public monies should subscribe to scrutiny, because that, as you said, that's, that's the public allocation of art. Um, we also, we do, we have aesthetic limitations on design, but art is a different thing. Art's remarkably different, and it's different than advertising, it's different than, um, it's, it's different than a facade of a building. And if it's publicly invested art, fine. I have no, I have no issue with laying down criteria, you could even make it, make sure they're all smiley faces, that's, that's, if that's what the public wants. What we're protecting people against, or from, is the manufacturing creation of an artistic piece that may not survive the test of time. Henry Moore statue of a nude, if it were placed in the grounds of the courthouse 100 years ago, would have met with great revulsion, and it would have been permanent. And now it would be something that would be considered, make it a personal destination point, as the aesthetics and the sense of it changes. And that's the thing that concerns me, and that's why I still, I'm still having trouble reconciling it.
Just, somebody is going to make the decision about permanent structures on public spaces. Someone's making those decisions. I can't go out tonight and just decide to put up a permanent structure on the sidewalk. Someone is going to say, Paul, you can do that, and Paul, you can't. I think this is a very good amendment, because it's the arts council then who will make that decision, rather than the mayor all by himself, or some other place. I think this is the appropriate place. Somebody's going to make that decision.
To that point, I, I, and if I can, I would just, uh, to the structural integrity and safety, yes. A static criteria?
Somebody, as a practical matter, if I decide to go out, even if it's safe, somebody is going to say, you can do this, or you cannot do this. I would rather it be the arts council. Someone, even if it's totally safe, yeah, the DPW can make decisions about safety, but someone's going to say whether I can or can't do this. Somebody's going to do that. So I think this is the best jurisdiction to put that in play.
The other question, uh, I'm assuming this is only pertaining to visual art and only pertaining to structural art, not performance art, for example, not.
Performance art wouldn't last.
Could last over 90 days.
It is.
Unless it were, um, I'm just trying to anticipate, anticipate.
Right in the, uh.
Right.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
I have to disagree with you, with the president on this, uh, on one particular case, and agree wholeheartedly with, um, Counsel Spector. Uh, I, I do not see a distinction, uh, between public funds and public space. I see, you know, now, there's a lot of space that is, that we have in the city that we consider to be public, but is actually, is actually private. There are private facades, private buildings, and so on and so forth. But the public owns, the, it's, the public owns the public, the public space. It's made, uh, it's made an investment in that public space that, that's centuries old. I don't see that funding new art onto public space, um, I don't see that the source of the funds makes any difference for who is going to be in charge of allowing such, uh, a, a, um, a project. And I concur, I not only concur, but we have evidence that Counsel Spector is correct, that in fact, it's not just the people who, the, the, the decision-making regarding, uh, art in the public square is not just whether it's safe, it's to its content, to its, to its construction, to the way it looks, the way it, and the, and its intended effect in some cases. So, and, and he is absolutely right. Without this safeguard, it is not subject to a public, uh, to public scrutiny. It's not subject to any oversight. It's, it's actually subject to, to whim, and, and the whim is by, uh, non, can be done by non-artists. And, uh, but, but, I'm repeating what Counsel Spector said, but I don't see a distinction between private and public funding. And, and in fact, uh, we have a mechanism in this city that will accept private funding, and, um, and, uh, and, uh, could conceivably, uh, accept private funding and place, um, art projects without any oversight whatsoever. Uh, and I see that as actually more detrimental to the public's use of space than, um, the public raising of funds. So I think that this is actually very important to protect against that.
I know, I was going to say, before we proceed, I'm going to ask the council to, uh.
Suspend the rule.
Suspend rules for the, the.
Suspend the 11 o'clock.
Thank you. The 11 o'clock, well, is there's a motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay, we continue.
Uh, Counsel Adams, did you have a point?
Also, I just wanted to emphasize, I said it before, but the Arts Council was unanimous, unanimously in favor of this, so they have no anxieties or reservations about, about whether or not it should be within their authority to do this.
Any other discussion?
Oh, just a question. Um, I just want to have a, a general sense about what, um, I'm assuming this is meant to address a, a problem, or something that has been seen as a problem, and maybe that would be helpful, if not just for me, for maybe the viewing audience, or if there's something, some example, for example.
Sure, the wayfaring sign, that cause of...
Sorry?
The wayfaring sign, that most people, everyone besides the planning department thought was art. Um, if this process were in place, that could have prevented that, if it were on the other side, because I believe the site it was on actually isn't city property. So if that were on the other side, that would be an example of this, that could have been prevented. Um, so it actually is in, in response to that sort of thing. So this, this isn't just a, a solution in search of a problem. There has been problems, and, and that's an example of that.
Counsel Tacey.
We had an instance in our ward, a guy had junk in his front yard, he went to, all the neighbors complained, they went to court, and the judge agreed with the guy, he says, "Define art." So they went away, the judge found in favor of the guy with the junk in his yard, and said, "It was art. You should see it."
Yeah, but that's...
It's a private space, not a public space.
I don't know how that's relevant at all, but that, that, this has to do with, um, public art, and there's no definition of art in here, so, I mean, I, I don't, I don't see it.
I, I, I share a little bit of the President's concerns about, um, just judging what is art and what qualifies as art, even as you just characterized, everyone, everyone except the planning board considered that to be art. I mean, I think it can be arbitrary, and certainly there are many pieces of art that, um, some, you know, warhol pieces, or many people that would not consider art.
I need to respond to that, but quickly. But wouldn't it be better if the Arts Council made that determination than the planning board?
Uh, well, I understand what you're saying, is that, I, I understand, I understand the sentiment, but I'm not sure that either the planning board or the Arts Council should determine what art is.
Can I go back to my question?
Hang on a second, hang on a second, that was directed to Counsel Adams.
I, I guess my point is, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I understand that it may be, may seem better on its face that those who are deemed artists would make the decision over those who are not identified as artists, but I, um, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with either of those bodies determining the value of the art.
I will just go back to, somebody is going to make the decision on a, in public space of a permanent structure, somebody is going to make that decision. Maybe it'll be the City Council, maybe it'll be the mayor, maybe it'll be the planning board. I think the most appropriate place that we have is the Arts Council. That's really what we're asking here, we're saying, where is the place that this decision should be made? It is not just that anybody at any time can just, if they have the money or the funds or don't need the money, can put a, art, whether we like it, don't like it, can just put a structure up that they call art, or somebody agrees as art on public property. We're saying, someone will make that decision. This is saying, we think the Arts Council should be the place to do it.
Counsel Murphy.
So if this doesn't pass, perhaps Counsel Adams should craft an ordinance indicating that no one in the city has art within their jurisdiction, and we shouldn't put anything up.
I, I think that's a specious argument. Um, but, um, I don't, I don't know if we've swayed any minds one way or the other, so I'd call the question. Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is there a request for a roll call on this? Oh, it is an order, so yeah, that's right. Um, roll call, please.
Counsel Tacey?
No.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Uh, no.
Counsel Dwight?
No.
Counsel Freeman-Daniels?
Aye.
Counsel Labarsh?
No.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
I believe the motion passes.
I guess.
Okay, that's the first reading. Um, damn, where are we at here? Okay. Um, this, oh, we did medical marijuana. Hey, look how far ahead we jumped. Um, so now we're up to the stop and yield intersections of Prospect and Woodlawn and Jackson.
Move approval.
Second.
Uh, Counsel Freeman-Daniels, would you speak to this, please?
Uh, the Council will recall that, um, we initiated a temporary traffic, uh, order of, um, a four-way stop at Prospect, Woodlawn, and Jackson Street, admit the warrants back over 90 days ago, I think, actually, maybe fewer than 90 days. Transportation Parking Commission has been monitoring this. It was, um, uh, it made the positive recommendation, I think it was unanimous, to, uh, to, to, to recommend this as a permanent ordinance, uh, for the city. We got a voluminous amount of email, and, um, it was almost entirely positive. Uh, the, and in fact, the only negative comments had not, did not have much to do with the four-way stop itself. So, uh, this is, um, just making permanent the temporary experiment, which, uh, I think, if you've tried it, I think most people agree that it has worked very, very well.
Uh, a question is that, um, with making this permanent, does that diminish the scrutiny of the intersection and possible future mitigation systems that might be employed?
Such as a roundabout?
Um, not necessarily. However, it has to be noted that, um, uh, the, what, the warrants for us, for a four-way stop, for example, are based on accident history. So if, uh, this dramatically lowers the accident history for a long enough time, it may be the case that it wouldn't qualify for additional, um, traffic mitigation.
Accident history just increased substantially on election night, just, just for the record.
I didn't know that.
There was a, there was a car chase through the intersection, a car ended up, was down in, on the property on Jackson, on the corner of Jackson and Prospect.
Well, I think the message then is that, uh, from the, from the perspective of your question is, there's still hope.
The reason I asked was there was consideration of a roundabout, it's something...
It's a ways away.
Got it, okay. That's what I need to know. Okay, I'm sorry, any other discussion?
The interest was, because winter's coming, you know, to make it permanent, get the barrels out of the way, because they're, make it hard to plow, so we want to get going on this so that it can be in place permanently for when the weather gets bad.
One other question to that, on that point of Prospect Street, there is, um, there is drainage issues on the downslope that goes down Prospect to Woodlawn Avenue that ices up in the winter, whereas previously, people didn't necessarily have to stop, so it didn't, there, we haven't seen this or experienced this with actually icy conditions. Is, does it make sense to establish a permanent, uh, structure, knowing that that could possibly be a problem?
Do you speak to that, since it's right at the corner near where I live? Um, you know, a lot of times you needed to stop. You didn't have to stop, but because that intersection is very dangerous, in all practical sense, you were stopping anyway. Um, the, the DPW is aware of that drainage problem, I'm not sure they're going to be addressing it or how to address it right now, but, um, I don't think the stop sign itself is going to make it any less dangerous. In fact, people know the stop is coming now, so they'll prepare for it, rather than having to stop at the last moment because some car, that was a very dangerous intersection, some car is in their way, so they're having to stop, so. And again, if we have a couple more small accidents, we can keep alive for a roundabout.
Um, the same question was asked at the Transportation Parking Commission meeting, and, and, and actually, it was implicit, and, um, Commissioner Lowenthal, uh, turned it around with a remarkable perspective and said, "If it was that hard to stop coming down the hill, just imagine what it would have been like if you were a pedestrian trying to cross the street." So, uh, I think, I think that's a, I think it's a good point. I think people will have to plan better and drive more carefully, uh, but that's kind of the point, so.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman-Daniels?
Aye.
Counsel Labarsh?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Tacey?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman-Daniels?
Yes.
Counsel Labarsh?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Tacey?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Next up is also a request for two readings. This is, uh, Schedule One Parking Prohibition All Times on South Street.
Move five and six as a group.
Five and six, the motion is for five and six to be moved as a, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, discussion?
Uh, um, do you mind?
Go, please, yeah, no, take it away.
I'm not sure we, did we move in second?
It's been moved in second.
Moved as a group, right.
The, these two, these two are, um, small, uh, changes to the code that are meant to accommodate a, um, a grandfathered, um, veterinary business on South Street. Counselor Schwartz brought this to, um, our attention at the Transportation Parking Commission some months ago, and it took us some time to work out the details of whether ordinance was needed or not, and so on and so forth, but, um, the solution, the problem is that, um, a driveway exit is, uh, people are unable to see around sometimes large vehicles, so the solution, which, which is a new, really new for the city, is we've eliminated one space, uh, and also created two-hour parking on the remaining two spaces that are in front of the building. Um, it's, it's relatively, it's, we're just trying it to see if it works for a grandfathered business in a residential neighborhood to, um, that, you know, it's, to see if, if just a small combinations can be made for, for visibility.
Any other discussion, questions? Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman-Daniels?
Aye.
Counsel Labarsh?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Tacey?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Suspend Rule 14.
Motion to suspend rules, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move five and six as a group.
What, second reading? Is there a second?
Can I just speak to the second reading? It's just, there really is, we could, we could wait two weeks, but, um, since we've, since it's been, when was it that you came before us, maybe in the spring? And it's kind of been a while, and we wanted to try to put this in motion. If there's any controversy, we can wait two weeks.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel Freeman-Daniels?
Aye.
Counsel Labarsh?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman-Daniels?
Aye.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Tacey?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman-Daniels?
Aye.
Counsel Labarsh?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman-Daniels?
Aye.
Counsel Labarsh?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Tacey?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman-Daniels?
Aye.
Motion for suspension of rules?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of suspending rules?
Aye.
Opposed?
To approve.
Second.
Motion's made, any further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, sorry, oh, sorry, got...
Gotcha!
Scare it away.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Tacey?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman-Daniels?
Aye.
Motion for suspension of rules?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of suspending rules?
Aye.
Opposed?
To approve.
Second.
Motion's made, any further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, sorry, oh, sorry, got...
Gotcha!
Scare it away.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Tacey?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman-Daniels?
Aye.
Counsel Labarsh?
Yes.
All right, we have a number of referrals here.
I move referred, um, orders nine through 26 to ordinance...
Second.
No.
Nope, let's hold off on that. So, nine through 26 are moved as a group to be referred to ordinance.
To approve.
And the motions are made, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that was one whole page.
Shoot.
Now, 27...[1619.63]